Yeah.
I thought we were on the same page.
No, but it was.
I thought it was a business, but I was just gonna be like, what happened?
Okay, folks, if we could get seated.
No, no, no.
Thank you.
You got it.
All right. Welcome one, welcome all. We're meeting is now in session. And my colleagues, if we could just take a moment of silence, and we'll do one again at the formal session tonight about our friends and even though it distance neighbors in Texas and in Ohio, once again, joining a fraternity that nobody wants to be in, but may we lift them in prayer and, you know, and we be there for them the same way so many people have been for us. So if we can take a moment of silence now. Thank you. Hey, Mr. Manager.
Well, sir, I, on the agenda, I had in the council, city council's briefing, a request from Councilmember Moss to discuss the potential November 2020 flooding project bond referendum. And maybe we should defer.
Yes.
Until he arrives.
Yep.
All right, then we shall proceed. So if we could pull this up. Twice a year, we bring forth our police chief to join us and provide us his midyear update or his annual update, depending on what time of the year. This period of time is now the midyear update. And so Jim, thanks for being here today. I appreciate all that you and your department has done and continues to do, and we're very proud of our police department. So can you pass this down? It's all yours.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Stiles, good afternoon. As the manager said, we're gonna do our midyear report. I give it a topic, I give it a title every time. Our title for this year is the virtues of policing. I know we just had a moment of silence for our fellow citizens so far away in El Paso and Dayton. We had our own incident and we began to talk about, and if you watched the news, especially in Dayton where they had video, the crowd was running away from the horrific shooting and three individuals ran into the shooting, they were the cops. And so it's a virtue of being a police officer, and we really want to always accentuate it's a virtue of being a cop. What we do in your police department, your police department, the center of everything that we do is based on the community. We try to measure the right things, and that's not always arrests and tickets, it's outcomes, not outputs. Enforcement is not always the end goal in everything that we do, and we hold ourselves accountable to our community. Stats are stats. You could see on the board that we've had an increase in our homicides for the first six months, 12 of those were as a result of the incident in building two. We did have an increase in some of our cases. I do want you to know that we track everything that's on the board. You will see that your larcenies are up and your vehicle thefts are up. In both cases, we track the reasons why that they are up. I will get to that in a moment. You'll notice that your burglaries continue to track down, and over the last decade, they've been tracking down every year. This is where we are. You'll notice that arsons have tracked down, so to my friends in the fire department, good job in keeping our arsons down. Our motor vehicle thefts and our larcenies are up, and I will get to that in a brief moment. Motor vehicle thefts. What we're finding, we had 243 motor vehicle thefts. 148 had a key was in the vehicle or the vehicle was unlocked. This is basically an education thing for our citizens. 94 of these cases, victims stated they didn't know if the car was locked. We're in a period of time where everybody carries a fob as opposed to a key. And if the fob is in your pocket, the car starts. Well, lots of people are leaving the fob in the car. So, and then they leave the car unlocked. So the bad guy opens up the door, sits inside, puts his foot on the brake, starts, the car drives away. We have a stolen car. How many other vehicles that are stolen are left running? It's phenomenal. How many people leave their car running at a 7-Eleven and you have a $35,000 piece of equipment and you walk into 7-Eleven because you do not want the air conditioner to be turned off? So while we're tracking these, we're doing the best we can, a lot of this has to do with education to the public. We track arrests, and we make a lot of arrests. We try to track arrests for felony, for misdemeanors, and we're one of the only police departments that you could think of that also tracks by residence and by race. And we do this for a reason. Most of this came out of the incident and the issues that we had 1989, 1990. Human Rights Commission said start to track differently, and we do. And you will see that we break our arrests down, and we break our arrests down by residence. And we know what the social and racial demographics are for the entire region. That is why we like to say so many people from Virginia Beach were arrested, so many from Hampton Roads, outside Hampton Roads, and outside the state. And sometimes we make arrests because the suspect self-identifies. What do I mean by that? We had a case at one of our establishments at the oceanfront on 17th Street. Some guys wanted to get in, they didn't allow them in for whatever reason, so they pulled guns. Okay, well, they called the police, these individuals ran away. A little while later, there they were in a car, the bouncers at the bar, said those were the guys with the guns. We stopped them, we took them out of the car, there were four, three of which had a concealed weapon, they all were arrested. So they self-identified. We did not identify them ahead of time. Burglars self-identify, armed robbers self-identify, malicious assault suspects self-identify. So sometimes if you see a number and you say, how come this number is this way? Sometimes it's not, the police have no control. Misdemeanor cases, yes, we do, on a lot of misdemeanor cases. We will notice over the years that our misdemeanor arrests, as I told you previously, have tracked downward, and there's a reason for that. Like I said, we do not measure success by how many people we arrest, by what kind of arrests we make, and how can we make our community safer. It was said in the paper the other day, resilient communities, safe communities, and community engagement are the three keys. We did take a number of guns off the street, guns are everywhere, we know that. We took 23 for safekeeping. That is, citizens will say, whatever family member is not acting right, we have a gun in the house, can we give it to you? They give it to us for safekeeping, and at a later date and time, the family members come and retrieve the weapon. Forty-four of the weapons that we seized were from the oceanfront study area. Oceanfront study area, as you know, is basically from the Loop to 42nd Street, and we go back about three or four blocks. But what we like to tell our friends who live at the oceanfront, the world does not end. At Burnneck Road, there's another big part of the city that's out there, and we have to worry about the rest of the city. But I show you this for a reason, because the next slide that we're going to show are the number of citizen contacts that we had. 130,000 citizen contacts. That's calls for service, that's misdemeanor felony arrests, that's traffic summonses, that's pedestrian stops, that's traffic stops. And what I tell everybody, about 80,000 of those were calls for service, nobody, nobody calls the cops because they're having a good day. Only if there's a problem. So we enter, everything that we enter is a highly stressful situation. Officers did this 129, 130,000 times. 300 times we used force. Now, what is, what do I mean by using force? Again, we track force differently than many other jurisdictions. 77% of those cases are what we call contact controls. So, Ms. Abbott, I'll use you as an example, not that this would ever happen, but if I had to arrest you and I merely put my hands on you to control you, that's a contact control. 77% of the times, that's all we have to do. But we track those. We're the only police department that tracks pointing a weapon at someone. Why? I think it's important if we point a gun at someone that we should track that. We also track pointing a taser at someone. Most other police agencies do not do this. So 301 times at a scene, one or multiple officers use some type of force. Just to give you an idea, firearms were pointed, if I just threw this number out or just posted it, 57 times in six months, we pointed a firearm at somebody. Well, without context, that would be a very tough stat to put out to our population. But most of those come from when our SWAT team has to respond to something. If eight officers are going on a SWAT team entering a building, as I've done it, your weapon is out. That's when the SWAT team enters a home, pretty much, we're coming out with a weapon. So we count all of those. Of those times, we did fire our weapon six times this year at a human being. Four officers accounted for building two, one officer up in the Arrowhead case, and then we had another case where the officer actually missed the subject. But we count those. We also, oh, wait a minute, let's go back, sorry. We had 26 citizen complaints during a six-month period, and of those, one complaint was about use of force. So I really think the cops do a great job in de-escalating. I think they do a fantastic job in internal discipline, in command and control, they do a fantastic. Now, it's a contact sport, and again, nobody calls us because they just bought a new car and want to show us. So on that note, one time, we got a complaint about use of force. We do like to show what we call without incident. Without incident is when something is, has happened where an officer could use up to deadly force, but they do not. During the first six months, we had, we took subjects under arrest who had the gun in their hand. There was another time where someone had the gun stuck in their waistband or a knife in their hand, and three other times, they had some other type of weapon. Let me give you the case that happened just last night. Officers responded to a burglary. Subjects were coming out of the house, and one of the family members recognized one of the subjects from the neighborhood. Told us his name, told us where he lived, the officers began to search for this individual. One of our police officers then identified all three subjects at one time in one area. He approached them, other officers were coming. One subject that he went to grab, the police under arrest for burglary, reached in and pulled out a gun. He pulled out the gun and he handed to the second subject. Right there, he has a gun in someone's hand, the officer is right on top of them, the weapon was pointed at the officer, he was able to use a tactical advantage, able to use a defensive tactic, take both of them down on the ground, the other police officers showed up, we were able to arrest them. That takes a lot for an individual to be able to do that. We had cases where, we had a woman at the north end who was up on the beach, she had a weapon in her hand, she was gonna commit suicide, the officers came, they de-escalated, they talked her down, they took the weapon, and they got her to psychiatric help that she needed. Unfortunately, we never hear about these cases, do we? Well, I'm here to tell you, we have them in our city. One of our long-term premier strategies is our crisis intervention team. You've heard me talk about it on a number of occasions. I'm very happy to tell you that last year, we started a co-response team with human services, with emergency mental health workers who actually rode in a police car with an officer. We've now expanded that to cover seven days a week. So I want to do a shout out for DHS. They have one of their work, one of their coordinators right in our building, and she coordinates all the CIT scheduling for the officers, for the officers at the drop-off point, and for the mental health workers. You will notice on there that I've gotten the Veterans Administration a little tag there, but I'm gonna go forward and come back. Our co-response team, these are the numbers that they've effectuated for the first six months of this year. That's a tremendous amount of work, that we are able to take an individual who's having some type of mental health situation and get him out of the criminal justice system and get him into the mental health system where they really belong. Now, this is assuming we have the tactical advantage, we could de-escalate at that moment in time. Then we call the co-responders, while they're on the way, they're on a computer already looking for hospital beds, contacting magistrates to get emergency commit orders. And what I really like is on a number of occasions, the private provider, they're able to get the individual to a private provider because they have the insurance coverage to do that. Okay, sounds fantastic. Back. But we're missing something. We have 64,000 veterans that live in our city. 64,000 folks in our city are veterans. And we are now making contact with the Veterans Administration because we know some of the cases that we respond to are an individual who happens to be a veteran, who is suffering from some type of situation where maybe we can get them the right help through the VA. No, the VA is not gonna put one of their workers in a police car to ride around with us. That's not gonna happen. But we're starting the conversation, I have a meeting this week, to see if we can get a quicker response, either at that moment in time or at least within 24 hours, to get the veteran the help that they need. Now, this is gonna take a little bit of time. You know, the co-response situation took me about 18 months to get in place where it is. I'm gonna assume this is gonna take about another year. But my word is, we're gonna work forward to help the veterans. We had one not too long ago, gentleman, Vietnam vet, outside shooting a gun about 2:00 in the morning. The officers respond, tactical advantage, they're able to de-escalate and get the weapon from him, and he was telling us that there were people in his backyard. Well, then he started talking, and well, maybe it wasn't people in the backyard. Maybe he was on the perimeter and he saw something move. He went to that place where he had been when he was in Vietnam, he heard something, he took his weapon. We were able to get that gentleman the help he needed. It took us a little longer than we'd like, but we're able to get him the help that he needed. Okay. You've heard us talk on a number of, you talk about policing is an evolution, not a revolution. You've heard us talk a lot about different places in the city. 326 is Western Bayside. We call it 326 because that's the patrol zone. It takes in Lake Edward, North Ridge, it takes in Bayside, a number of areas. And we've been tracking everything that we've been doing in this particular area. This is where I want you to know that the captains of the third precinct, and there have been a number of them over the years, have been heavily engaged with the community. And the numbers that we track are doing well, especially for the population density in that particular area of the city. The social demographics, we're doing really well. And again, it is because the community is what we're here for. We're a city of parties. We sure like to have a good time in a lot of places in our city. These are the number of special events permits that were issued for the first six months, and it could go for some other time in a city, but they were issued for the first six months. And we provide coverage for every special event that has a permit. As you know, some are bigger, something in the water, Punggol Strawberry Festival, we know we have the why not classic every Wednesday, we have to put officers in and around town center. We do this for a number of reasons. One was played out in Dayton just two days ago. With the Punggol Strawberry Festival, we have the chairman of the Punggol Strawberry Festival is Police Captain Todd Jones, and I asked him to come. Where are you, Todd? I asked him to come to let you know that not only does he do the work of a police captain, but he also reaches out to the community, and he has basically taken over over the years, the Punggol Strawberry Festival. It has been a tremendous success, it's getting bigger and bigger every year, and we owe a lot of that to Todd's leadership. Thank you for the money to build a new fourth precinct. I, Deputy Chiefs of Carol and I were fortunate enough, when we went from three precincts to four, we opened up the fourth precinct that started in a back room of a fire station. We then moved into the old Kempsville Library, and we affectionately called ourselves the Kempsville Police Department because we did things differently. And we've outgrown that building a long time ago. So thank you for the funding to construct this new building. Deputy Chief Gallagher has had the lead on constructing this building. He's missed his date twice, I bet him it wasn't gonna happen until this fall, so hopefully we'll be in by sometime September or October. Neighborhood surveys. This is the most inefficient, labor-intensive way to do business, to get a survey done. We go, last year, we knocked on 3,000 doors, we completed 2,000 surveys. These are the neighborhoods and the dates where we will go door to door. Yes, we capture information. Yes, there's a lot of validity threats because the officer standing there asks the citizen, so how good, how well are the police doing in your neighborhood? Okay. In the beginning, everything was great until we gained the confidence of the community. Now they tell us like it is. And we take this information. What are your main concerns in your community? Where are we headed for? And then we use that information when we use our tactics and strategies. Not too long ago, we were in Lake Edward, the citizens wanted to walk through, and Public Works, Public Utilities, a number of different agencies walked with the police through the neighborhood, and I was ecstatic that the citizens' biggest issues were broken sidewalks, broken curbs, streetlights that weren't working. That made me feel really great, that we're out here and I just, and by the way, Public Utilities did a fantastic job in listening to the citizens and correcting those problems because that is broken windows in its finest way. So we will be in all these neighborhoods, you're invited to come walk with us. We just go door to door, we like to go to areas where it's multifamily dwellings because we can, we could exponentially increase the number of homes that we visit. Tonight is National Night Out. We will be in a number of neighborhoods, I believe it's 27 total throughout the city. You know, one of the success stories about National Night Out, I go to a few neighborhoods that have grown, they're enormous, Green Run, Scarborough Square, they're national nights out. Night, national, night out, is enormous. But this past month, we met with a number of folks from our Hispanic community, Hispanic business community, and Councilwoman Wilson, you'll be happy to know that the captain at the second precinct walked across the street to a little grocery store, La Tapatia. In New York, we would've said a bodega. And met with everyone, and we put together a National Night Out for Spanish-speaking at their location, that will start tonight at 6:00 PM. And we've also worked, we have a date now where we are going to have a special citizens' police academy for individuals who speak Spanish. Yes, everybody also speaks English, but they're more comfortable. We have, and thank you again for the stipend for second language, our officers really appreciate that, so our Spanish-speaking officers will take this project on and we will have the complete citizens' police academy in Spanish. You know, I had a conversation one day with an attorney who said, well, your job is to enforce the law. No, it's not. Your police department are agents of social change, don't ever kid ourselves. There is no social issue so great that can't be corrected with more police training and more police interaction. What you see is just some of the things that we did last year. Where we go everywhere. Councilman Rouse, we did appreciate rolling out all the big equipment on Saturday. I think the kids really enjoy it.
They do.
And it's great. It's great to see young kids climbing through the bomb truck, you know, we had it right. Or the young, the young kids coming up, the horses and so on, they really appreciate policing in the 21st century. Final. This is our honor guard. With what happened in our building two, the manager said, he's gonna put the honor guard on this, not only the police honor guard, but the fire honor guard. So I asked Lieutenant Humphrey and Battalion Chief, Warner Kent, Trent, sorry, to be here. So you would recognize, they put in a ton of hours coordinating all of the honor guards from our two departments. They did a fantastic job. Here's what it all boils down to. I hope I could get through this. One of our officers was at a meeting with the counselors about building two. He was the only police officer in the building, or in that particular meeting, and he kind of sat off to the side and in the back. Emotions were running high. One woman shared a story of what she lost during that day. And, and she was really distraught. She was sitting down, she was trying to process through everything, she was emotionally distraught, she was crying, and suddenly she saw a white gloved hand extend to her and take her hand. It was an honor guard member. And he said, as she was telling the story, she said, he held her hand and said, you're gonna be okay, we're gonna help you be okay. So, yeah, we arrest people, we do this stuff, we take guns off people, but you know what? The virtues of being a cop is your police department, these officers, they have compassion for their citizens, they have understanding for their citizens, and you know what? They do one hell of a good job. I'm open for questions.
Questions, anybody?
Aaron? I don't have a question, just more of a comment. I'm gonna say thank you for your leadership, as well as your officers and everyone under your command. You know, this particular weekend, you guys brought out the big trucks, as well as a fire department as well. And it's great because it helps build the relationship between the police and our community. But it's National Night Out as well, and I'm looking forward to leaving here a little earlier and going out to Lake Edward to partake in National Night Out. And I can't thank you enough for your leadership and actually going into the communities, being proactive instead of reactive. So thank you and everyone here who serves our community, you truly are the finest of our city.
Thank you.
Michael, then Jess.
Chief, I wanna just also thank you for everything that you do to serve and to protect our city, and for everyone on your team for their sacrifice and for their hard work, it's truly appreciated. I'm very happy to see a decrease in, well, I should say I have two questions, so I hope my colleagues will bear with me on that, but I'm happy to see a decrease in violent crime that's particularly encouraging. However, I have noticed that there, both anecdotally and from the numbers that you presented here, that there's an increase in larceny, and particularly in the neighborhoods around the area where I live, there's quite a bit of break-in into cars. And just as you said, in my experience, most of it is associated with people who leave their, leave their car unlocked and leave things in their car, which can be enticing, but it still is very much a violation. And effectively, we know from cameras that are, you know, people have in their homes now that, you know, these people come around to neighborhoods and they go to every car on the street about 3:00 AM and check the doors, and if they, if they're able to get in, they'll take whatever they can. And I wonder if you could share a little bit about what the police department is doing? It's obviously a challenge, and obviously the first line of defense is to lock our doors, and we want to make sure that the public is aware of that. But what beyond that could the police department do to bring down, to somehow intervene with these people who are roaming our neighborhoods at 3:00 AM to check cars?
What we do is through crime analysis, we begin to see a trend, and if there's a trend in a specific area, we will then initiate a patrol plan. In other words, we will add extra officers into that area at those times when, when the crimes are occurring. Years ago, we used to call it cops on dots, and, but today, it's all computerized, so we were able to get these officers, and if it means bringing in officers on overtime, we have the ability to do that, and they will then begin to work in those areas. The other thing is that as officers make an arrest, people have, you know, property on them, and they will begin to question about certain pieces of property, and like this particular gun from the case I told you about last night, that wasn't taken from the burglar, that was taken from another case. So we're able to backtrack as best as we can, and we know that once we apprehend a group, everything will stop for a while, then the next group will pop up. So we do analyze, and we do respond as quick as we can to the analysis. The other thing that we're finding is, as you said, many, many individuals now have whatever system it is around our house to capture video, we go through the neighborhood and ask if we could, if we can look at video. We do this very well, especially in commercial districts when we have an issue. Some police agencies have began to tie in private video surveillance into the police surveillance, we're not there yet because of a number of reasons, but basically, to answer the question, we analyze the crime, we respond to that crime, and we do our investigative work, not only at that moment, but in other cases, that will have to try and backtrack them.
And my second question, thank you for that, and for your efforts. My second question is, Chief, as you know, from our work together on the Human Rights Commission, it's very important to me that those who serve our community reflect our community. And so I wonder if you could speak on a little bit about how the police department is making efforts to ensure that the men and women who serve the community do more fully reflect the community, in particular, women in leadership roles, people of color in leadership roles, and people from other backgrounds, creating opportunity to have careers in public safety.
We, by the way, the entire police profession has that same question asked. Recruiting is down across the country. We reflect recruiting, not a deficiency, but, but our recruiting is much more difficult than it was at one time. difficult than, than it was at one time. Um, we attempt to recruit in those areas where we think individuals would gravitate towards policing. For example, sometimes you go to a job fair. Well, your college students who, who have business and math degrees with their resume aren't gonna stop at the police booth. So what we do now is we target, we, we, we analyze those, um, degrees where individuals would then gravitate towards policing. All of your, your, your physical degrees, um, obviously your soc, your psych, and so we specifically recruit in that area. We recruit, for female recruiting, we go a lot to the sporting, uh, fields and, um, we look to recruit from the sporting field. African-American recruiting is nowhere near where we like it. Um, we're attempting to work with the community as much as we can. The, the issue, I think, is that everybody in policing is, is looking at the same, uh, demographics, so to speak, to say, I, you know, we want to increase our recruiting so it's becoming highly competitive. To be quite honest, we're not where I would like us to be. While we're attempting, um, we're not where we would, we would like to be. As far as promotional opportunities, uh, you know, you recently passed the Workforce Development Program, which we're renaming the Professional Development Program. Uh, that has been a big, a big increase. Um, we've been, we, thank you, because we've been at this for about 20 years and looking at how do we professionalize policing? The other thing, a number of years ago, um, we, we asked diligently and we now have a tuition reimbursement program in our city so our officers can go to college and, and most of the tuition is paid. And a lot of cases, what's not paid, the police foundation will then pick up, especially the books, which are outrageously expensive. A lot of the courses now are online, so the officers don't have to go sit in a classroom. I teach at TCC. They don't have to come and sit in my classroom and listen to me drone for three hours. They could do it online. So what we're attempting to do through the Professional Development Program and, um, through the tuition reimbursement is assist officers to, to get, to get those, that criteria of what they need for the promotion. To be honest, is, uh, female promotions have gone well, uh, in the last couple of years. We have a lot of folks that, um, are now in, in lieutenant's positions and hope, and in captain's positions. So the bottom line is to, to really answer it succinctly, we're trying as hard as we can. We're, we're not where we need to be. Um, I'd like us to get to a better place and what we continually ask the community is help us get to this place. If I go to a meeting and somebody says, your African-American officers are only X percent of the department, but the city's 20%, what are we doing? And I always say, how are you gonna help me? Because really, a, a poster on a board doesn't automatically make someone decide to become a cop. It's something intrinsic that, that I think that the community feeds to them. I hope that answers it.
It's a, it's a problem all over the, it's a challenge and we're not exempt from that challenge, but I appreciate your attention to the matter.
And, 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 you know, uh, we're, we're really, we're attempting as hard as we can and I'm gonna be very honest that we're not where we should be or where I'd like us to be.
Jess?
I just had general comments. I just want to say thank you for everything you all have done, but I wanted to give my personal thanks to Battalion Chief Trent and Lieutenant Humphries for everything they did. The work I got, the, Michael and I got the opportunity of working with both of you very closely in June and I'm just very grateful for what you do for our community and what the honor guard does for our community and, uh, you all deserve way more than we could ever give you and I, I just very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Yeah, I think, anybody else? Yeah, just wanted to thank you, chief, for, we are still the safest city, a city our size in this nation because of the efforts of your folks, you know, the cops that do the job and I appreciate that. Uh, could I impose on you to give an update on how the internal, uh, review was going? Uh, the, your, your review on the incident?
Our particular?
Yes.
Criminal investigation.
Okay, the, um...
Criminal investigation.
We had two criminal investigations. Um, we have to open up a criminal investigation, um, for the officer involved shooting. That's been, um, finished. We've taken it to the Commonwealth Attorney and there's no, no issues with, with that particular thing and, and, and we, we did the complete investigation on that, as we should have. The other criminal, a part of the criminal investigation, we've, we've interviewed well over 200, the last check I had was 280 people we interviewed. I don't know if you know, but the investigative division sent out a, um, survey monkey to all city employees who worked in building two, who was near building two, and so what were, they were able to do then is just get a list of people and go out and talk to them. Some of the folks had absolutely nothing to tell us, we know that. You know, I was in another end of the building, I was out that day, whatever the case may be. Um, we've worked, as you know, with the FBI, they'll be here tonight for the presentation. It's gonna take them a while to finish their investigative end of, which is the, uh, evidence collection. It'll take them a little while to finish that. From our end, we're working close with the independent investigative group. So, so, so mayor, the bottom line is, we're, we're close to being finished without the piece from the FBI.
Okay, thank you. Everyone, great work. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, chief. Moving on, mayor?
Yes.
Members of council?
Yes.
I've got Brian Solis, Assistant to the City Manager for Special Projects and, uh, we have assigned him, uh, the Shared Mobility Services to include motorized scooters. So he was, uh, successful in helping us with something in the water, so let's, uh, toughen up the schedule. So Brian, take it away. Thank you for being here.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Manager, uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Stiles. It's called Shared Mobility Services because it's very much, um, a part of the shared economy that we now find ourselves in, uh, from short-term rentals to now shared mobility in terms of devices that are available for folks to, um, pay for on an as-needed basis and have availability on an as-needed basis. And the, this particular focus that we're on right now is motorized scooters and I appreciate, uh, speaking of, um, police, Captain Wychandall, um, updating you and walking you through the code adjustment on July 9th. We believe overall that, uh, that amendment to allow, um, motorized scooters in the shared lane has gone relatively well. There's, we can always improve, but it has been, um, an avenue literally for them to redirect riders off of the boardwalk and the adjacent shared use path onto a north-south, um, venue where, where folks can still get about the resort area, particularly during resort season. So for the purposes of this briefing, we're gonna talk about that current reality and in recent changes that, that we went through, um, in terms of the adjustments to the code, how that's been going, um, the introduction of Lime scooters elsewhere in the city beyond, uh, the northeast quadrant of the city where Bird is. Um, and then geofencing and the ability of technology to help us, um, govern the use of these, um, devices. And then start to outline a path forward for you, um, because we believe we can get to a more harmonious, um, place in terms of shared mobility and motorized scooters in, um, in our city, um, overall. And, um, at the end, happy to entertain any, uh, questions, um, or suggestions that you have. So, um, this is directly from Captain Wychandall's, um, briefing and I appreciate her, her being here today as well. Um, in general, um, motorized scooters can be, um, operated throughout the city on designated, um, paths and sidewalks, uh, with the exception of the resort and town center. Now, um, the resort is from Pacific Avenue East, uh, from resort season is May through September, um, and they're prohibited on all sidewalks and, um, the boardwalk in parallel path, um, east of Pacific Avenue with the exception of the change made July 9th that, uh, they're allowed in the shared, um, outside lane of Atlantic Avenue, um, just like bikes and the trolleys are. So, uh, in terms, uh, these are kind of four sets of photographs and when I start on the left, you see kind of properly staged, um, scooters. And when you're looking at these photos, please also notice the bicycles because this was a random Tuesday and this happens to be in the resort area, but it could be any day of the week and I'm down there every day observing the behavior and throughout our city, much like, um, you are. But on the left, in terms of staging, that's the proper staging between the main, um, walking area, the sidewalk, that's 24th Street Park and the curb itself. And then they were properly staged here as well on the west side of Atlantic Avenue, but either somebody tipped them over or one fell over and it was a domino effect. And so that does happen. So proper way, still proper, but happened that they fell over and yes, if you call, if we call a Bird representative, they're usually out there within an hour or two to fix the situation if they're not already in the area. Um, you'll notice the bicyclists on the sidewalk, which is illegal in Atlant, in, on Atlantic Avenue, so that behavior also occurs with bicyclists and pedestrians, um, as, as well as scooter, scooter riders. So, uh, the top, right at 15th Street, this is the exact same area, you can see the same hotel. Uh, this gentleman happens to be in his late 60s, early 70s, uh, riding the scooter, the proper way in the shared lane, um, heading, uh, with traffic, uh, in this case. And then you have tandem riding, which is currently, um, legal, but one code revision that we can consider along the way is, um, ensuring that it's only legal to ride a single file or a single person at a time. Just some other observations in the third set of photographs, um, from your, uh, left over, um, just you have a cyclist way up, uh, this is heading, uh, southbound on Atlantic Avenue near, uh, 40th Street or so and you have a parent and a child, she does have a helmet. They're in the middle of the road, it's a shared road, um, and that's, that's legal, but you just, I know some bicycle behavior. Then here you have bicyclists, one in the travel lane, one in the outside lane, one in the other outside lane. I can do a, kind of a quiz about which one's legal and which one's illegal, but basically riding against the flow of traffic as a bicyclist is not legal. So you have that activity and you're actually going towards trolley drivers in that case, uh, going on on Atlantic Avenue. And then here on the bottom, um, as well, you have a family, uh, you can't tell, but this parent has a smaller child on tandem, has a daughter up front on a scooter, then mom's on a bicycle, so you have all modes. They are in the outside lane, which is legal, but tandem riding currently legal, but not according to Bird or Lime scooter policy. They, they say only, um, one rider at a time. And then the far right, the reason why I put those photos on there is because first thing in the morning during resort season on Atlantic Avenue, you have in the top photo on the right, um, folks parked all in the outside trolley lane because they're loading. They're loading and unloading everything from laundry to, uh, supplies to get ready for the week, for, uh, business. And you have the same thing going on with the, the industry calls them juicers, and that is, um, those folks that are employed usually on a 1099 status to pick up the scooters, um, at night, charge them overnight and then stage them back out properly in the resort area afterwards. So my point with showing those photos is that just like, uh, supporting the businesses with addresses, this gentleman is also getting ready for business for the day as well, setting out these mobility devices out in the resort area. So some of the tools, um, that, uh, but police and, and I and others have requested of the two companies operating Virginia Beach right now, uh, with motorized scooters, Bird and Lime, is to geofence those areas that, um, are in line with where they're prohibited. So when you look here on the left, all of the purple of that image is where Bird currently has scooters in Virginia Beach, which is the northeast quadrant of the city, um, a lot of denser parts of the city, including the resort. Um, they geofence that red line you see, it's supposed to indicate the boardwalk and an adjacent shared use path. Um, you see that, you know, it tells you not to ride, um, or park, uh, within those areas. The, the three on the right-hand side are all of Lime. This middle image shows, um, basically, uh, the entire, the majority of the Pembroke Strategic Growth Area focused on town center and it says, no parking zones repeatedly, uh, parking here may lead to fine or suspension of your account. It will not let you operate scooters there. There is a standard deviation or a buffer. It's not like a force field where it's a, you know, a, a line in the sand. There is some, some buffer there between, um, geofenced areas and sometimes you can ride slowly into those geofenced areas like you see on the boardwalk now, but generally speaking, it will slow them to a speed. It should give them a warning to go into a permitted place. Another area, uh, from your right is Mount Trashmore. It says low speed zone, but basically, uh, they're not permitted on the path at, uh, Mount Trashmore either, uh, something we'll talk to Parks and Recreation on as to whether they have any paths that they believe, uh, on park properties that they'll be appropriate. So we'll be, um, talking with them. There is a member of, two members of Parks and Recreation on our Shared Mobility, uh, Services Task Force. And then on the far right, Lime, although they're not currently, um, that was during kind of a staging or education time, but they're, they're generally don't have a big presence at the resort area right now, but they also have the boardwalk, uh, geofenced. So we are looking at, in particular, and we get, um, I see most of the comments and most of the emails that come into the city related motorized scooters, as does police and, um, communications and Nancy Bloom and others, but, um, the ones, the advice that we're most focused on are those localities in Virginia that have already gone through the process of either, um, revising their city code and/or piloting, um, motorized scooters as shared mobility. We're in particular looking at Norfolk and Richmond and also looking at Alexandria, which has seven providers of both, um, e-bikes, bike share and motorized scooter share and then Arlington as well. Um, all of those are more, are denser cities or more urban, uh, cities, but there are certainly processes that we can learn from them and there, there are a spectrum of differences and, and the number of, um, vendors that they permit to operate in their city. And there are a number of tools that those cities were able to gain by going through a permitting process. Um, there is sharing data in terms of, uh, the amount of rides that, um, these devices have within their city in a given period of time, the number of miles, the average speed, the total number of scooters that are in their city at any given time. As an example, I received information from Bird today that in July, the month of July, they had 128,340 rides, um, which is a lot. That's rides, not miles, in, um, Virginia Beach. Uh, Lime, over the two weeks that they've been operated, July 12th through July 24th, they had, uh, roughly 11,000 rides, 21,000 miles, which they felt like were a lot. Um, but the next time I come to you, I want to provide some context to those numbers as to what does that mean? Does that mean that it, we may think it's a lot, but what is it a lot? What is a lot in, in relation to other modes of transportation, um, in the city? And what is it in relation to other like localities in the country, um, suburban type of scale to Virginia Beach? So we are diligently looking, along with our, our city attorney's office, at these models that are, that are in place to, to develop a permitting process. Um, parallel with looking at creating a permitting process, we are gaining, gaining stakeholder feedback, um, through, um, most anyone and everyone that will have us going through a number of your, um, appointed boards, committees and commissions and have a number of them, uh, remaining, um, slated for the Virginia Beach Council Civic Organizations in September, uh, had the Bayfront Advisory Commission on August 15th, the Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Commission on, um, committee on August 19th and a variety of others, uh, along the way. And what I'm, how we're framing the discussion, because in general, the issues that most people raise can generally be categorized by these four questions in terms of where they think they should be, where they think they shouldn't be, um, and what the scooter companies can do to create a safer, more harmonious environment, because sometimes what they can do, um, is in addition, is more than what we can regulate in terms of, um, state and city law. So there might be things that the scooter companies agree to that, um, that, that we may, that may go beyond the law that we're able to implement. And then what can we do to change the law to make it safer based on enabling legislation at the state level? And, and the end result, we do believe, at the end of the day, and no later than the end of the calendar year, we'll have a safer shared use environment for mobility, um, in the city. So in terms of timeline, um, we are currently in the middle of, um, our stakeholder involvement and in terms of community engagement, we are working with, um, Julie's office to create a public input survey, uh, that will be live, uh, here shortly. You will, you will get notice, uh, when it is. We're finalizing the format of that and that'll likely be live for roughly 10 days to two weeks and we'll, uh, use that, um, information framed generally in those four questions, um, but we'll give them some choices, um, so that, um, they're not so open-ended. But at the end, we'll add a question about other suggestions that folks may have that aren't covered in those questions. Um, August, we are, uh, throughout this month, um, in addition to stakeholder involvement, um, we'll be developing, um, kind of a permit and a permit application process with the task force and the city attorney's office and we hope to open that up for roughly a 45 to, at the most 60-day period, um, to entertain, um, permit applications and... And we'll need to come up with a number of vendors that we feel comfortable recommending to you that should operate in the city, as well as the total number of scooters that should operate in the city, based on our analysis and feedback that we've received. And then ultimately, obviously, you would make, help us make the choice of that. And then advertise those. And we may need to adjust the city code to better frame the process. And then we look to evaluate those applications and award them and execute the agreements with vendors in the last quarter of this calendar year. And everything would be in place by the end of the calendar year is what we're looking at. So with that, I'm happy to stand by with any comments or questions you have.
Ms. Wilson, then Jess. And Sabrina.
Well, I guess just a couple of comments. This is by far the number one complaint I get from people in my district because I have Shore Drive, which has been just a dumping ground for the Lime scooters. And frankly, when they set them up, they're, they're okay. But when people leave them, they leave them in the medians, they leave them everywhere. And it's, it's, it's in rough, it's in rough stuff. This morning in my neighborhood, I saw a kid that could not have been more than 11 or 12, zipping down on a Lime, this is Lime, not the Bird ones, zipping down King's Grant Road on a Lime scooter. And I know they say they're not allowed to do it, but, but somehow they are bypassing the age restriction on these things. And, and that, that, that's an issue. And then when I stopped at 7-Eleven, there's one parked right on the sidewalk of the 7-Eleven. And the guy in 7-Eleven knows his own council, he said, how do I get rid of that thing? I said, it's your property. You got, you have to do it. Because he said he called the police and they wouldn't come take it away. And I said, well, you guys have to do it. And he said, it's been sitting out here for two days. And, you know, he wants, wants it away from the front door of his place.
So just real quick on that, they have a towing company? They can?
Well, if the towing company will do it. Because I've had issues with that with other things that people have left in other properties. And an oral surgeon called me the other day and said, he said, you know, you really need to do something about this. They are giving me a lot of business, but you need to do something about it. I mean, people are falling and getting hurt. And then we all got the email from Brad Capps last Wednesday saying, I learned that one of our guests was injured while walking on the sidewalk on Atlantic Avenue. She was run into by someone on a Bird scooter. She fractured two bones in her ankle. She, as well as her family, had to cut their vacation short. So depending upon what the average amount that somebody spends on a vacation in Virginia Beach, we lost significant revenue here because people left, you know, might not come back to Virginia Beach because of a bad experience, because somebody who wasn't following the rules. Because the geofence works, but it doesn't say it has to be right there in the, in the trolley lane. It does, it's not that, not that level of expertise. So that, so that's, that's a, it's an issue. I mean, these, these things are extraordinarily dangerous. I did notify council that it was my intent to bring forward something to, to franchise these things. I think we need to do that sooner rather than later. The one benefit to these things, frankly, and Aaron knows this, and Brian, you know this from your time on HRT, first mile, last mile for transit, because of the way transit is, is spread out in Virginia Beach, you know, I, I think that's something that, that could be useful. There's, there's no first mile, last mile use at the resort. There's no first mile, last mile use going on, on Shore Drive. They're used, they're strictly as recreational, things like that. So we need to be cognizant of that. You know, we, we, if we're going to still continue to allow them down there, we've got to do something with signage. We've got to, we've got to make sure people know what the rules are. I mean, right now, if, if you get one of them, if you scroll through and you read all the stuff, which nobody does when they click accept on this stuff, you know, you're missing, missing all the stuff that you have to have this, you have to wear helmet, you have to do all this, minimum age, all that kind of stuff. People don't, people don't catch that. They don't know they're not supposed to ride them on the sidewalks. They don't know they're not supposed to do any of this kind of stuff. So, so that, that's on us. I mean, we definitely need to do that, but, but we've got to do something about this. And, and we've got to do something about it as, as soon as possible. I don't think we should wait till the end of the year. I mean, people are getting hurt and it's, it's taking an inordinate amount of time from the police department. And, and we just, we have to do something with it. So that's what I'd say to the council.
Okay, Rosemary, Jess, and Sabrina.
Brian, you really get all the hard jobs with something in the water in this one. I mean, this is, so I'm on the boardwalk every single day, every day. This geofencing is not working. I see scooters on the boardwalk. I see them in the parallel bike path. I'm out there telling them, you're not allowed to be here. You have to go back to Atlantic Avenue, over and over again. I'm out there policing them.
Can you give her a ticket book?
And, and the problem is too, if you see somebody doing something wrong, there's no way you can report it. They're not numbered. You don't know who it is and they're gone in a flash. And of course, this is not the best way our police officers should be spending their time. I mean, it's just a mess. And this geofencing, it, it might've been good if it was working, but it's not working. I mean, I see them all the time. And you see, just like Jim says, they don't follow the rules. It's a toy for them. They jump on and it's like when you have the use agreement on anything that you have with the computer and you just check it and like you've read it. Well, nobody reads all that stuff, right? And so there, there's children on them, they're in the wrong place, they're in dangerous places, people are getting hurt. I mean, it's, it's bad. It's really, and, and I'm afraid, because I pull out on Atlantic Avenue, that somebody's going to be going the wrong way down the trolley lane and I'm not going to see them and I'm going to hit somebody. I'm terrified that I'd have to live with that with the rest of my life. And they're so fast and they zip in and out. I've seen them on Pacific Avenue zipping around through traffic like they have a death wish. I mean, it's.
In California.
I mean, and there's so many, I mean, there, there's so many of them and they are everywhere. And just the clutter alone, it would be offensive enough, but the danger, it is really, really dangerous.
Okay, Jess?
I have a couple of questions. I don't know how much of this you'll be able to answer, but as far as the regulation from the state, are they required to have a helmet on when they use these?
No, and, and it's, I know it's, there was just the, the language related to the age of 14.
And do we have, and what is the age that they have to be legally from the state's perspective or ours perspective, whoever's perspective, to get on the scooter? I realize when I talked to Bird, they said that they don't allow somebody under 18 technically to be on their scooter, but what is our regulation?
I believe, police, you're interpreting 14, right?
It's 14.
It's 14 because it's, I'm sorry. It's, it's the age of 14 because it's considered a motorized scooter. Under the code, it allows the age of 14, but if they're on it at 14, they have to have a helmet.
So we would, we would need to petition the General Assembly to change that age to maybe, say, 16, if we wanted to pursue any kind of change, correct, Mark? Because we couldn't, we could not do that.
We would have to be able to identify a state statute that specifically authorized that regulation.
So assuming there isn't one, we would have to then, so the reason I ask is the big complaints I've gotten are nobody's wearing a helmet. And obviously, if all, you're going to have a serious problem. And then that there are kids on these. To me, it would make sense that perhaps in our legislative packet, we would ask the state to say, you need to be 16 years old, because I think if you can operate a moving vehicle, you should, you know, I think that, that, I think that's a logical, consistent thought. And that would maybe hopefully get some of these little kids off of them. Does Lime do an ID check like Bird does?
Uh, they can, yes.
But do they require you to start the scooter, to scan in your driver's license?
I don't believe every time. It is definitely one of the things we're looking at requiring.
I know Bird does, so that was why I was wondering if Lime did.
It's wrong.
Well, I know, yeah, but the parent scans it in and.
They can.
Okay. And then just out of curiosity, because in Kempsville, the Bird scooters are basically non-existent. But then when Lime came in, they're everywhere in my district now. And I'm just curious, does, has Lime reciprocated any data with us showing like who's using them? I mean, I, I drove, the street I drive on to go to work has had the same four scooters in the exact same spot and have, they have not been touched. So I'm just wondering, I think that, I agree with what Jim said about this being a first mile, last mile solution. And I think that maybe when we're drafting what this regulation looks like, that we have perhaps tell them, we'd like you to put a corral, if you will, next to a bus stop so that I get off the bus, I grab my scooter and I go to my house. That would make sense to me. And, you know, of course, in the cities that I've seen that have any kind of these shared mobility devices, be it bikes or scooters, that's what they have. They have these corrals that are gated off and that's where you can park it. And if you don't get it there, you're going to get charged as if you were still using it. So that kind of prevents the littering and, of them anywhere in the city. I know when I was in Tennessee and that's what they did. If you stopped it early, you got charged until you got it to a corral. So I think whatever language we develop for the regulation, it should be, you got to get it to where, you know, an appropriate drop-off point is. And, but back to my question, do we have any idea how they're performing outside of the resort area? Because I mean, that to me seems like the most logical place for them, town center and the resort, which I realize we don't want them in town center, but those are the places where I think they'd be most efficient.
So.
I know I just threw a lot of.
No, no, that's okay. So and it, and this is exactly why we're going through stakeholder involvement, to handle this comprehensively first, because we're getting a lot of great recommendations. There's some that we can get from the industry. There's some we can get from other cities, but we want to listen to your stakeholders and your residents about what they're experiencing, what they're hearing while they're currently operating legally and, and in some cases illegally in, in Virginia Beach. With regard to the metrics, talked about earlier, Lime's, the numbers they've given us so far, which is outside the resort, was for that first, that two-week period in July, from the 12th to the 24th, 11,000 rides, 21,000 miles. Some of the data sets that we plan on requiring, if you were to get a license, a franchise license to operate in Virginia Beach, a number of things. Not only new signage, but consolidating signage. We don't want a bunch of new signage at the resort or anywhere else. We want to consolidate those signs. We want to receive funding to be able to, for that expense, among other expenses, like police enforcement and public works. So we want to have a fee structure as well. So we are getting data, but it's part of the data sets we want to get. We want to get heat maps on a monthly basis of where they're being used, where they're not. Parking corrals is another tool. One thing you have to be mindful, we should be mindful of as we look at these tools is that the very thing that is alluring to this mobility choice is you do get to drop it off where you finished your ride. You don't have to walk back three blocks to a corral or one block to a corral and backtrack. That's the whole point about mobility. In your denser areas around the country, that does work because you have such density that you have a lot of corrals. But some cases it'll work, some cases it might not. So we're going to identify those areas where it does. We are looking at further restricting what roadways these are allowed on, you know, perhaps 25 mile per hour roads only or, or, you know, less. So there's this whole portfolio of tools that we're looking at either working into a code revision or making it a franchise licensing requirement. And we want to address it comprehensively once, not come back to you with a bunch of changes. We're trying to get it right the first time and listen along the way. So that's the reason why we have the short three-month time period to, well, it's really almost four months to get through this. So to answer your question, yes, we get heat maps about where.
So do we see them being used outside?
We have not got that yet. They've only been for a few weeks. But in light of that, we can't, they're not required to give them to us. So it's just, we can ask for it and receive it, but we're going to make it a requirement so we get consistent information every month.
I mean, I would think they'd want to be putting them where they're being used.
Yes, yes.
But the, just two, two more thoughts. One is, I talked to the director, the regional director of Bird Scooter about having fines for the people going outside of the geofencing. And they, Bird had indicated to me that they were leaning to, to start doing that, but because I don't, I think there's probably no more motivation than knowing that you're going to get a big bill if you don't follow the rules. So I think whatever franchise agreement we go towards, that it should be a monetary fine on the behalf of the user. That way, the person who's dealing with the consequences is the person who's breaking the rules. And that would be easier to enforce than trying to get a police officer to chase them down. And then, I should have wrote my other question down. It's gone. I'll come back.
Okay, Sabrina.
I want to say thank you again, Brian, for giving me some background information and answers to how Lime deployed their scooters so quickly without notice. That was really the major concern for a lot of constituents in, in Centerville, because it's, it's like mayhem. Wake up one morning, they're everywhere. And I've gotten nothing but calls and emails from civic league presidents asking me, what are you thinking? What is your problem? We don't have any place in the Centerville district to really ride a lot of the scooters. They're riding them on the sidewalks, in the street, which is posing a huge danger because they're young riders. I've heard them tell me from at least 10, 11 years old that are riding these scooters. So I'm, I'm getting a lot of really negative feedback, but part of it is just the way it was deployed. There was just, I mean, they just came out of nowhere. And, you know, residents are very, very concerned about that. And that makes me a little bit more hesitant to co-sign on a project like this because of the way, you know, Lime deployed their, the scooters and the way they conducted business. Just no courtesy, no communication. It's like, we can operate in your city, we're here. That's not the way you do business. And I've spoken to the representative about that, that I didn't appreciate what she did or how they did it. And they really need to rethink the way they are operating in, in the city. And that's with any other new vendor that would want to come into the city. Just some type of guidelines, rules, communication, something. I believe I was at a civic league meeting and, you know, one of the officers said, they heard the commercial on the radio. We had no idea. So it's, it's just, it's just how you do things. It's not all the time what you do, it's how you do it. So I, I hope that they will take that into consideration. And, you know, again, with the best use of the scooters, they should be more so near bus lines if they're going to be in the Centerville district. Otherwise, it's really not that much need or use for them, from what I've heard from the residents. And, you know, they're being hauled up in certain locations, they're in the streets, they're in front of, you know, people's homes, they're in some of the condo areas where, you know, I saw one email, they said, well, we're just going to get a truck and haul them all the way. And I said, well, don't, no, maybe that, that's not, may not be a good idea. But there has to be some way to set boundaries, to put them in certain places. And when they're charged and put out, they should have boundaries where they should go back. They should be limited if the program is going, going to continue. Because I've heard also from people who are just, they're just dangerous, they say. There are no helmets, two people are riding to a scooter and they just don't see the benefit. And they have told me, we just want to end, we, we don't want them in the city. We want to end the pilot. And I, you know, I would agree with, you know, Councilman Wood, we got to do something now, not, you know, I know we said it to the end of the year, but I don't think that's, that's going to work, you know? And the last question, well, the one question I have is how do residents get involved in giving their feedback? Because that's a part of it, the frustration too. They have a lot of feedback to give. How do they get that information out? How do they engage, you know, so that they can provide that feedback that's required?
So one, one broader way is what I talked about earlier, was that community input survey that is the most direct way, that they could do it on any, you know, any mobile device or, or PC or, you know, a computer or, you know, I go out to any organization, I already am. And so there's going to be direct ways. So what I'm hearing you say is you need a more compact timeframe, but then we need time to be able to listen and get, receive the input as well. So the two are kind of competing against each other. So we're trying to do a parallel process of developing a permitting process and then listening at the same time and trying to make it meaningful so, and trying to cover our bases. So if you name a group, I'll go out to them. And I'm already going to the Virginia Beach Council Civic Organizations, which is supposed to be representatives of all the organized civic associations, so.
And that's, and just one quick thing, that's what I will do. I will give you that information so you can come out and speak to them. But also knowing that some of the people who are complaining, they are not computer savvy, they're not going to go on a computer, they're not going to go on a, their cellphone to do it. They're going to just, you know, tell you exactly their concerns and what their feedback is. So I, I think the survey is great to a certain extent, but it's not going to capture a wide array of feedback from the citizens that I've been working with.
Okay, thank you, Sabrina. Good points. Louis, then Aaron, and then Mike, Michael, then Guy.
Brian.
Yes, sir.
How are these individual units taxed?
I do not believe that they're taxed in Virginia Beach. I believe they're taxed in their, at their origin of their, their business. They don't.
I got it. May I?
Yes.
Mr. Jones, we don't have a franchise agreement, therefore we don't have taxation. Right now, the commissioner of revenues is trying to get them to declare. Right now, the commissioner of revenues is trying to get them to declare their revenues that they're generating. They don't have a business license.
Correct. But they, it's a motorized vehicle.
If I may?
It's not.
The commissioner of revenue has sent Bird and Lime letters asking for them to provide a statement of the property that was in the city on January 1st. That's tax day for personal property. So, for the tax rules, if it didn't come until January 2nd, you can't tax it until the next January 1st. So, they're trying to get a report from the companies of what was here on January 1st. When they have that, they can then issue bills.
Let me, let me ask a couple of questions. If I, if I own a motor scooter, and I take it on public property, the roadway or city, don't I have to have a vehicle tax or something?
It's a device, it's not a vehicle, and that, so, that's the way it's classified, Mr. Jones.
Hey, pardon?
It's a device and not a vehicle. So, like a bicycle?
That's true. It seems to me like it is a vehicle.
If I may, for tax purposes, if I had a scooter at my house, it's classified as a household good, and it's not subject to personal property taxes. A scooter of this size. If you are a moped, which has certain CC requirements and speed things, those would be something that would be subject to tax, and they would fall under the general vehicle category. These scooters are smaller, and the engines aren't of a size that'll...
You said, "If you have one at your house." But, these are being used for public transportation purposes.
Correct. That's why the letter was sent from the commissioner to the companies, to find out what was here on January 1st. As a business use, it would be subject to taxation.
Would it be subject to a license, individual license for each unit?
So, the issue with business licenses, you need to have a definite place of business in the city of Virginia Beach to be subject to business license?
I'm not talking about business license. I'm talking about a vehicle that's being used for transportation purposes. Now, if I, if I, my car, I have to pay for a license to operate, a license on public property. If I have a motor, motor, you know, a motor scooter, you may not remember motor scooters, but I do. If I had one of those, I had to have a license, just like I had to have to have a license for an automobile. Why, why is it that these, you call them devices, I call them, I'd call them vehicles, because that's what they're being used as? And, and why, why couldn't we require them to have a vehicle license, just like we do a motor scooter, or a, an automobile, or a, other types of public transportation that are using the public right-of-way and so forth?
Even bicycles have to have a license.
So, presumably, you could put that in your legislative agenda, to ask them to tax or license these in the same manner as motor vehicles?
True.
At the present moment, they aren't treated that way by the state, but you could ask the state to do that.
So, we'd have to have authorization?
So, yeah, so the state, through D and B, does the regulation of motor vehicles, including the licensure of those vehicles. So, the way they define it is going to work backwards into the licensing.
Has anybody defined it?
They're defined, yes. And, and there was legislation in this year's session to sort of clarify this specific type of scooter, as opposed to some other wheeled devices that it was very close in tightness to. So, the General Assembly has acted upon that, and presumably, they could continue to work, to refine it.
Seems to me like somebody ought to look into that, because that's...
Okay, Aaron?
Couple of questions, Brian. First of all, we're fine-tuning this regulation, and I know the need to get something done now. I think, you know, we do have a pilot program, so there's a, I think there's something to keep in mind. We are within a transitional period. And it's at the end of, or we're coming to the end of the tourist season as well. So, let's not, like, jump the gun. Also, far as, I think signage is a huge issue. I know you mentioned it earlier. Signage is, is the, to me, one of the number-one issues, particularly why I run at the oceanfront, I'm by Rosemary, I'm almost down, almost every day. And when I, I'm cycled as well. When I cycle on the bike path, there are people walking on the bike path, and I've seen numerous accidents from people walking on the bike path and bikes and so forth. So, there, there are probably a lot more accidents involving bikes than our scooters. So, this isn't like, this is a new problem, because we have a new technology that's being introduced into our, our, our city. So, let's keep that in mind as well. So, I think a huge thing that would help us out would, I would, I would recommend possibly a call or code of shared lanes, so people know right away what's allowed within these lanes and what's not. And also, increasing the signage at the oceanfront, because when you do hop on these things, there, I was down, down all the time, and I tell people, well, when they can't get them to work on the oceanfront, the, what do they call it?
Geofencing.
The geofencing is working there, but there's some that make it through, but they can't last long. So, I tell them, and a lot on this side of the, of Atlantic, and there's no signage or anything unless they know that. So, they try anyway, until it cuts off, and they say, "Oh, it must doesn't work on this side." As well as the, the bike path and the boardwalk, the little blue signs that are like four feet tall, that's hiding behind all the bushes and poles you can never see, that's something that I think we can, we can do better on as well. So, while, I do think there's, there's a lot of concern, rightfully so, while we're trying to fine-tune this. I do want the council to keep in mind, we're at the, we're coming to the end of our tourist season as well, so we can get more input from our residents and all the stakeholders. And so, we can better make sure, when we do put out leg, legislation and franchise agreements, that we are all on the same page, and that is, is really what we want. But, I'll caution us to remind us that we are in a transitional period, it's something new. And so, there are going to be a lot of, "What is this?" complaints and so forth. Also, and just to agree with Councilman Wooton's, I am too hurt, and I've actually been in an agreeance of being upset about how it was introduced, how it was just dropped on us. I would have liked for Lime, as well as Bird, before they even made it out here, to come to council and ask for allowing to be introduced in our city. But, that's neither here nor there. They're here now, so what are we going to do about it? So, I would take, Brian, when we do have these stakeholders and public input sessions, I'd like to be there as well. But I, as well as all the negative things I heard, I heard just as much as positive influences from tourists and from my residents, using them at the beach as well, and around our city, so...
Okay, Michael, Guy, and then Jess.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just want to share that, and I have, I have received quite a bit of feedback about the scooters as well. Much of it is negative. And I'm extremely concerned about the discussions about safety in the scooters, and I'm very respectful of the opinions that have been expressed to me about the, the mess and some of the inconveniences that exist around the deployment of the scooters. And, and I'm, so, having said that, though, I've also received a lot of positive feedback. And I think we need to keep in mind that there's thousands or tens of thousands of users of this technology who are favorable to it. Otherwise, and we're just not hearing from them, because they're riding. And I think it's really important that we do keep that in mind. I think it's important that we stay open-minded to new technologies, and to continue to be embracing of new opportunities within the city, all over the city. I think that people in parts of the city, other than the resort, are using these scooters for different methods of transportation, and that's something that I think we should be encouraging of for a variety of reasons. One is, it creates greater access to opportunity for more people. I think it also creates another option for sustainable transportation, clean transportation, and inexpensive transportation. And people are using them, and I, and if, I would like to get more information about how people are using these scooters to move, and what they're using them for. And that's one thing I do plan to, to make a request of the scooter companies about. But, I just think it's really important, and I think Aaron makes a good point, we're nearing the end of the tourist season. People aren't only using these at the resort, and I think it's important that we stay open-minded. In addition, I think there, we've seen some very potentially sensational news reporting on the injuries related to these scooters, because people injure themselves on skateboards, people injure themselves on bikes, people injure themselves, frankly, walking in great frequency. And so, I'm not sure that we have a greater, we may, but I think that we still have more analysis to do before we make any conclusions about how these scooters are, or they aren't injuring people. And then, finally, I'd like to ask a question of Mr. Solis, as it relates to towing the scooters. I understand there's some concerns about that towing companies have been authorized to effectively treat these scooters as vehicles, and then, the companies are being required to pay to, to get their scooters back what they would have to pay for a car that's being towed? And could you provide any more information about that? And, because if that is true, I would be concerned about that as a policy.
So, on private property, we're encouraging folks to use the number that's on the scooter to call the company first. And usually, they'll be responsive 24/7, within an hour or two. And most folks aren't aware of that. But, for like multifamily developments, I believe that they are calling their towing company and confiscating the vehicles on private property. I'm not sure we have too much jurisdiction over what is left on private property in that way. So, to answer your question, usually, when it's on private property, they dispose of it on their own means as they see fit.
Do you know if the, that's, so, that's, those are in the cases of if the private property has specifically requested towing. Do you know, and what I understand is possible, is that the towing companies are proactively searching for scooters on private property, and then, and they're impounding them, whether or not the, that property owner has asked for the scooters to be towed?
I, I have not heard that. I haven't seen it. I'm not saying it's not happening, I just haven't heard or seen it.
Okay, Guy, and then Jess, and then Jim.
Folks in the Beach District are not shy about calling me and writing me about scooters. And most of, most of the mail is negative, but I think we've aired it well, and I don't need to say much more about that. I do think this pilot program should continue, because I think it is, the problem is of sufficient complexity that it requires the kind of study that we're undertaking. I think it'll be worthwhile. I'm not predicting how it would come out, but I certainly think it's worthwhile. I know, you know, I, I have, see residents and tourists every day, and the intermediary sometimes between the residents and the tourists are the hotels. They, they are run by residents, they employ, they employ residents, they contribute to our economy. And, I don't know, Brian, maybe you, have you met with the hotel association?
Yes, sir. We, we...
They have got some points they wanted, but I thought it was of interest what the hotel points are.
They do. They've established a position that, in general, they're in favor of them being a mobility choice at the oceanfront. They're in favor of a vendor and a franchise license. They're in favor of anything we can do to try to educate folks about proper rules of the road, wearing a helmet, riding single person at a time. So, they have formally given us their position early in July. They, they forwarded that, and then I went to field questions and get feedback at their general meeting the second Thursday of this month, and the mayor was, was there as well.
Right. And I was at a meeting also with them, and they referred that to me. So, they, I think, have an open mind about it, and I think probably we all should as well. The hotel folks, if they're losing business because of scooters, are going to be pretty keen to that, to tell us about it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jess.
I think, moving forward, it's very important that we remember that we are, we struggle with transportation, I think, a lot in this city. And I think, in the discussions about how we're going to ask the General Assembly to help us, and how we need to categorize these, and more pointed, how we're going to tax them, we need to remember that the reason they're affordable is because they do not have an overbearing regulatory force bearing down on them and saying, "You have to come up with X amount of dollars every time you operate." And while I appreciate that they're being utilized on public roads, and maybe they have a share in that, I think we also need to be cautious in remembering, we have, we want people to be able to get around affordably in the city, and I don't want us to inadvertently make these more expensive to use. And I have, I've reached out to council members in other jurisdictions, and one of the things that they've seen is that when we prohibit competition, that the rise in the cost goes up, and then, the ridership ultimately fails until the company finds the level they're comfortable with. So, I think with a franchise agreement, we need to be open to having multiple agreements. That's kind of what it sounded like to me, anyway, but just for the record, I think we shouldn't say only Bird, or only Lime, or only scooter company XYZ. I think we should be open to several of these companies. That way, there is fair competition. And that the riders who ultimately, or who we want to be using them, are getting the best possible price for the service. Which also leads me into my next issue with them, is we have an incredible opportunity with the Norfolk Southern Right-of-Way. I really believe, we've always talked about using it as a transportation method, and I think, opening this up, saying, "We have an opportunity, we have a private industry that's come into our marketplace and said, 'We want to be here, we need to explore what that looks like on the Norfolk Southern Right-of-Way.'" And I, I think it's been too long, I think we need to have an update of where that, that's at. I've talked to Parks and Rec, I've, I've heard a little bit of that, they're making progress on it. But, I think we need to see how those tie in together, because I think there's a huge opportunity to really capitalize on, on this shared mobility.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Well, I was going to ask to say something else, but, but actually, something Jess just said made me think about this, and, and that's something that we do need to talk about, ideally, at our retreat, is what the future of the Norfolk Southern Right-of-Way is going to be. We've had some interest from entities that want to acquire pieces of it or crossover and that sort of thing. I don't think that's what we want to do, but we don't have a plan. The council hasn't, hasn't said, said what we want to do with it. So, you know, if it is something we end up using for motorized scooters, or bikes, or walking, or whatever, we, the council needs to decide whether or not we're going to keep this as a corridor or not. And, and I think that's something that's, that's a longer-term discussion...
I agree.
...that we need to have at a retreat, and I would, I would ask us to remember that for when, when we come up for the, the upcoming retreat in the, in the fall. Rather than that, I'm not going to ask any more questions about this.
Okay. Ms. Barbara?
Well, there has been quite a lot of look at the, at this right-of-way, and plans, and designs, and so forth. And Bikes and Trails Commission is very much interested in this, and I believe, with your permission, I signed a letter supporting a grant for one portion of it, just...
Two phases.
Okay. For two portions of it. So, there's a lot of, lot of action on that right-of-way, so maybe...
We'll schedule you an update.
Lot of action.
So, Mayor?
Yes.
We'll bring it back to you. Pilot continues. We've got lots of information. Brian's on the street. We're gonna, we're gonna answer your questions. Brian's your POC. You can always go through me. We're working it.
My only request, I think our only request, is that we somehow get this expedited. I think it's got to be a high priority to come up with something for a safety reason. I think a lot of people here made valid points, pro and against, and, you know, we have to find a better mousetrap here.
Okay.
Okay, next one.
We've got the planning items, we have a significant number, so I'm going to ask Bill to come in here and rock and roll. So, bring it up on the screen. Bill, are you taking charge?
I'm taking charge.
All right.
Wait a minute. What about Mr. Moss's request that we delay?
About the planning items? Because I came a little bit late, I'm happy to go after that.
Okay, we'll go after that.
I figured that's how you would do it.
Okay, not a problem.
And you can gauge your time on what you want to do in executive session, and...
Not a problem.
Go when you can.
Okay.
Not a problem.
That's correct.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'll be taking you through the planning items to be considered by council, both tonight and at your August 20th meetings. All items are recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Those items scheduled for tonight include the first item, the application of Roelma McGraw. This is an application for a conditional use permit for a family daycare home. The applicant seeks to provide care for up to 12 children in her residence. She has experienced caring for children in this residence for almost two years. The 7,500-square-foot property has an enclosed backyard to allow children to play safely. There's no known opposition to this application.
I have a question about this.
Yes, ma'am.
When we get these applications, I know that a lot of this is governed by the state...
Right.
Do they look at the square footage of the house?
Do they look at the square footage of the house?
For purposes of licensing?
Well, for purposes of letting them have 12 children. That's a lot of kids.
Yeah.
A lot of times it boils down to the number of caretakers they're permitted to have and there is a size requirement, but they do inspect the homes well when they, when they get past the, what's considered babysitting, which is the four, up to four children.
Right. So I guess more specifically, because I know a lot of insurance policies say no more than six children in, in home daycare.
Right.
So I'm curious, is the state, I know that they require insurance, but how are they getting around, I'm sure there's a policy you can buy, but are they required to furnish a policy that says you're permitted to have more than six kids?
There, there's a whole process of the permitting for the state. We get a preliminary, they do preliminary review first and that's how they kind of get kicked into our review. I believe part of that is that they do have to have proper insurance and have everything permitted to care for the children.
But it's the state's responsibility to inspect whether the property is large enough.
Correct. One of the conditions is that they must have all permitted licenses from the state, which covers all that review.
Okay. So we don't, we really can't say anything about the square footage of the house?
We'll review, we typically will review it for leniency. If this was a small lot and it looked like there were too many residences around, it would be considered in our analysis.
So on your analysis, you were, it says square footage of the parcel, so are you now, you analyzed the parcel, not the house?
Correct.
We're focused primarily on the outdoor play area, whether it's safe. Typically it's in the rear yard, typically it's enclosed.
But they're probably going to be spending most of their time inside.
But we do allow, that's, that is licensed by the state, which is why we let them govern that since they actually go into the home, do the full inspection, certify all the people that are caring for their children.
It just seems like a lot of kids for that house, that's all. I'm just, that, I have, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but it seems like a lot of children in one house. I feel like two kids in my house is too many, so.
That's because of yours.
Now we're getting to the number.
The next item is that of S. Kate House Virginia Beach LLC. This is a conditional use permit for an indoor recreational facility. The applicant is proposing to operate a family entertainment center with a roller skating rink, indoor children's jungle gym, gaming center, and video games. And there will also be a tap room with beer, wine, and non-alcoholic beverages for the parents. No changes are proposed to the building itself, which is about 27,000 square feet in size, other than the proposed signage. There's no opposition to the request.
Just for council's identification, when you go to the people who do leasing of retail space.
Right.
This is in the top four repurposing uses of retail space is indoor recreation.
Which explains why you'll see this application, that of Michelle Gold VAB located in the same general vicinity. This too is a conditional use permit for an indoor recreational facility. It's a slightly larger building, 41,000 square feet in size. Again, aside from the signage, there are no changes proposed to the building. Applicant intends indoor recreational activities including trampoline courts, trapeze, foam pits, arcade games, and an American Ninja style obstacle course. There's no opposition to this application. Next item is that of MMR Associates LLC. This is a modification of proffers. A conditional rezoning from AG2 to conditional B2 was approved by the city council in August of 2016. As part of that rezoning, there was a site plan proffered, which showed the construction of a metal shed to be located 20 feet from the property line adjacent to Morris Neck Road. Although the plan correctly depicted the right setback, it was incorrectly stamped with a zero setback at the time it was picked up by the contractor. And as such, the foundation for the shed was poured little more than six feet from the right of way. Because of this mistake made by both staff and the contractor, the applicant is seeking a modification of their original proffers to permit a reduced setback. It's important to note that even with the reduced setback, the building will still maintain a distance of 30 feet from the edge of pavement. There is no opposition to this application.
I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
When did we do a root clause analysis as to how it happened? And was it a process failure or a failure to follow the process? And what corrective action have we taken to make sure it doesn't happen again?
Sure.
This happened at the middle school too.
This, this ended up being a process failure when it went through. We had a stamp that seemed to be auto-filled when it came through because it didn't have any of the other typical information that happened. So when that happened, but that being said, the applicant did know that he had to have that setback. He paid an engineer to design a site plan that showed the proper setback in the right location. So the site plan was engineered and designed appropriately. He didn't follow his approved site plan either. He just happened to get a stamp that was zeroed out. So we have identified that there was a, a gap here and we are being more careful with our review to make sure that these, these conditions are being met.
And I can answer later, I'd like to know specifically how the process has been modified, whether it's two persons verification or whatever, because this could have happened on a much bigger scale than what this is. And so it really is worthwhile to understand how the process is different to, if it was a process there, take your word, that the process, how was it changed to preclude this from happening? That could have later date, not today. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Allen.
I just, looking at this, I don't think this is a precedent problem because this particular contractor slash owner, I think owns all of the business in this whole intersection, all corners and so forth. So it's not something that's going to be teased. And I think, you know, as being a contractor, a pretty reputable person, he's, well, okay, they're saying it's a zero, so that's why he went forward with what he did. So it's, it's small enough that I don't think it's an issue. I don't think it's a safety problem and I don't think it's a precedent setter, so I think we can go forward with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next application is that of Josephine Parker. This is a conditional use permit for an automobile repair garage. The applicant proposes a conditional use permit to have a garage specializing in the service and repair of alternative fuel vehicles. The applicant's also seeking a modification of conditions to an existing CUP for a bulk storage yard behind the property, which it will merge with the existing storage area behind the building. The yard will continue to be used for the storage of vehicles undergoing servicing as it was originally intended. There's also a cell site on the property. There are no changes proposed to the cell site. There is no opposition to the request. Moving on to the agenda for the 20th. First item and the second item are requests for street closures in the Croatan neighborhood. Both will result in closing of 375 square feet of alleyway. The first one is adjacent to property on South Atlantic Avenue. And the second one is proposed adjacent to 536 Vanderbilt Avenue. There's no opposition to either application.
Can you go back to the, the main map where it shows all the parcels that are not yet, I guess, acquired?
Yep.
That one?
Yep.
Can we ever look at those and say that while they may not have any value for public use, but they would have some value for, for drainage or other things of that nature? So when we are looking at conveying that property, are we conditionally conveying that such that if we have to acquire it to use it for some kind of drainage or drainage mitigation, we aren't paying for it twice?
Right. As part of the review by the viewers group, we do look at whether or not there are public utilities already in place or whether we anticipate that there might be public utilities in the future. And if so, then we will typically ask for an easement to be placed on the abandoned alleyway. Well, the reason I'm asking, these are areas where you have very limited and non-impervious surfaces. Right. And so the, this is some of the few impervious surfaces. Once you make it part of a lot, next thing you know, it becomes impervious. Right. So as part of the sale of this property going to be, that the property has to be maintained in an impervious state so as not to further aggravate our drainage issues? I'm just saying, we've got these policies and we have these things we talk about, but then when we do the analysis and assessment, it seems like those considerations that we talk about are never brought into the evaluation process. And if they are, that's great. I'd like to know it. But I think when we have something that we say is important to, especially in areas where there is very little of it, don't mind selling it, but I think it would be best that it would not end up being a pave, a shed, or whatever, and we maintain the pervious nature of the property. This asks, I mean, other people have their thoughts, but that's what comes to my mind.
Are you requesting we modify the proffers this evening?
Well, I'm suggesting, the council as a whole makes choices. I always abide by that. And I might be the only, I'm only sharing it to see if other people have a similar consideration and if they do, it's something. But if not, I'm just expressing a view that other people might not have thought about. So I'm looking to others to see if that makes sense and if they say yes, it's a council choice, I'm just highlighting the observation.
Maybe that's a thing to do after this one, going, moving forward.
Okay.
Since this one's already in the queue.
Right, fair enough. That's a good point about not being, but that is fine.
But I think you've made a really good point.
I do, too.
Okay. Thank you. Next application is that of KI Kennels LLC. This is a conditional use permit for a commercial kennel. Purpose of the kennel is to provide overnight accommodations as well as daytime care for up to eight dogs within an existing ancillary building on the property. The applicant is also proposing to have no more than four personal dogs on the site, which will stay within their own residence and not in the kennel building. Dogs are kept primarily indoors within the building, which is both heated and air-conditioned. The nearest dwelling is approximately 200 feet away. There is no opposition to this application.
It's on Ness Island, it's fine.
So it doesn't need.
I think it's pre-rule.
Anything goes to that one?
No. I think it's properly, I think, they're, they're well-known and liked and I think they'll be fine.
You mean the dogs or the?
Both.
Well, this is where you have to leave the state to get to it.
Next application is that of Town Center Associates Nine. This is a request for alternative compliance. Special exception for alternative compliance is necessary to accommodate a blade style sign. The CBC district sign rules limit blade style signs to ground story establishments and to a maximum size of nine square feet per face and to signs that occupied exclusively by the establishment associated with the sign. This sign will provide direction to a second story establishment that might otherwise be challenging to find by passerby. There's no opposition to this application. Next item is that of an ordinance to add section 223.02 and amend section 501 pertaining to assembly uses in residential zoning districts. Staff has had quite a few requests lately for assembly uses in the R30 and R40 residential districts. As such, this amendment was proposed and in fact is necessary in order for the next item you'll review to proceed. Restrictions contained in this amendment include a minimum site area of three acres and minimum setbacks of 50 feet from residential properties. When it comes back, I'd like to see the discussion, the analysis of how we came to determine that the minimum was 50% of required parking, because often sometimes historic sites are preserved as part of a rezoning, but the rest of the neighborhood has very narrow front lots. Often, one car can park on, after you put the driveway in, because the overall neighborhood is different. I can think of one recently over there someplace. And so I'm just kind of interested on how the rationale and the reasoning that shows 50 versus 60 versus 30, I'd like to understand how that assessment was conducted. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. This is the application that is allowed to or could move forward if approved by council. This is a request by Drebon Sejo LLC for a conditional use permit for an assembly use. The applicant seeks to operate both an indoor and outdoor event venue on the Sejo Farm Guest House property. Limitations include no more than 40 outdoor events per calendar year, no more than 150 attendees per event, outdoor events must cease by 9:00 PM, no live band or amplified music, and as a result of testimony at the Planning Commission hearing, there's an added condition to pave a portion of the entrance driveway to minimize noise. The driveway backs up to some adjacent homes and there were concerns by those residents that cars traveling on that gravel might create excessive noise. There were both opposition speakers and speakers in support at the Planning Commission hearing. Opposition speakers typically raised concerns about incompatibility and quality of life issues.
Jess.
So I've been out to the property three times now, because residents in that neighborhood immediately behind it have, are very much against it. And even after the things that were set at planning, I would, one, appreciate a verbatim before it goes in our packet.
True.
Because I want to read those for myself.
Yep.
And then, I guess, questions are how we got to 40, where, how we got to 150 in attendance. And then I keep hearing issues about a private road. Is that this, the gravel road or is there another private road?
That's, yeah, it's within an easement and the applicant's attorney has provided easement documentation that shows, or what they believe establishes their rights to use that road for purposes of this assembly use.
Would you say that again?
Sure, yes. It, it is a, a private driveway and there is an easement that exists that allows the applicant to use that driveway. And they believe it also allows them, not just for their residential purposes, but also for purposes of the assembly use. So we've raised this with the attorney for the applicant and we've said, you're going to need to speak to this at the public hearing to confirm that indeed, based on the easement documentation, that you do have that right to use that driveway.
Have they cited any ordinance or state law or anything like that that supports that provision?
No, they just cite the language in the easement itself, what they believe to be confirming language in the easement, which gives them the right to use it for this purpose.
But is there, there's not another road. It's just this one driveway that is big, right?
Correct. There is, there is a second point of access to the property, which is primarily used by the, by the private home on the property. It would not be used, it's not planned to be used by the assembly use.
This must be where the confusion is, because I'm trying to understand, I, when I went out there, there were these signs that said, private drive, do not enter.
Right.
And so I only got to the very front of the lot. So there's a second access point?
There's a second access point that's gated and it's, it's access from the nearby residential community, which was actually parceled off from the original estate.
So the concern I've had, I've heard is that apparently whichever entrance is closest to the neighborhood is the one that's going to be used.
Correct.
Versus this private driveway.
Correct.
That would limit this noise that, and I don't know.
Right.
Because I've not actually been in it. I've just been on the perimeter of it and in the neighborhood right there. I'm trying to understand, where is the second access point?
Right.
Because that's the, what, the complaint I've gotten is, why do you, why don't you want to hear this noise, but we have to?
Right. Right.
The, I apologize.
It's every time. It's a learning process.
Yes, sir. The entrance that they're, that they're showing that they'll utilize is the one from Shell Road.
Okay.
There is a secondary entrance that comes in from the actual Sejo Farm planning unit development that is gated and blocked off. They are not utilizing that for their entrance. So their entrance that they're proposing is from the Shell Road entrance, which is currently this gravel drive that you saw that says, private, private entrance, do not enter.
Okay, so then maybe it's a miscommunication, because the residents believe that they're going to have traffic in and out of their neighborhood.
Right, and that's not true. It's, it's through that private driveway.
That makes me feel a little better.
And, and what the, what the Planning Commission picked up on was the noise from the cars traveling on that gravel driveway. So the applicant is willing to pave that portion of the driveway, which is immediately adjacent to those homes, so that hopefully the homeowners won't hear the cars coming and going on that driveway.
So then getting back to my question, why do we pick 40 and 150? Where do those numbers come from?
Right. We'll have to.
Did the applicant request it or?
We'll have to elucidate that in the packet.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to. Really, you have something to say.
That's right. The 40 comes from the request of the applicant, the 150 comes from, I know when we pick numbers, we try to have them correlate and 150 is one of the tipping points for if you're having a special event in a residential district, you have over 150 and you have amplified music, that requires that special event permit. So we use that number to be consistent with what another resident having a private event over 150.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Kevin.
That helps me. Thank you.
Good, John.
Just two questions. One, the lawyer for the applicant certainly has a vested interest in coming to an affirmative conclusion.
Certainly.
Understand all that. So I would appreciate that our. So I would appreciate that our own staff, who is much more objective, I'm certain, can give us to make sure that we have something to compare, because I don't trust them, but they have an advocacy and so therefore there's a little bit of skepticism. And secondly, I notice this says 150 attendees per event and no more than 40 events, but nothing says they can't have multiple events on the same day, the council gets that 40. And nothing says no limit at all on the indoor events. So I'm just, just curious, at some point since that, at what point if they maximize, if you did an operation research algorithm and said, "What's the maximum throughput that could be on that site under those terms?", would the use of the site demand they pay for signalization as you enter their driveway? If somebody hasn't done that analysis, someone should, because you're setting up the demand situation. And once you establish this legal right, believe me, the economics will drive them to maximize those parameter values, and then you're not going to have any recourse and it would be a public expense. So I would like to know what that is.
And this list that you see up here on the screen is not the whole entire list that contains or limits their activities on the site.
But if you've done that analysis, I'd love to see.
Good, Barbara?
They're going to be having all these outdoor events all during the year, there's going to have to be lighting. Don't have any conditions that relate to the, the lighting that I'm sure they'll be putting in and. Relation to the, to the residents. If I experience I want without.
Yeah, sure.
You have a lighting special.
Right. There are 24 conditions that relate to the actual application itself. So there are many more conditions. The parking is well on the interior of the site. It's limited to about 25 cars in front of the guesthouse, which is what will be used for the assembly use. It's well removed from nearby adjacent homes. Most of the outside activity would be on the opposite side of the guesthouse, which is located out onto a private lake. So it too, the view is mitigated through trees and across the lake from any other nearby homes. So any lighting they have will be just for minimal amounts of safety and security. They're not planning to have large pole-mounted lights anywhere in that vicinity.
I think it has to be very specific what we want.
I think we need to know what Mrs. Robinson's rights are. She's the one, she's the person who lives in that little square there where it says "closest resident."
Yes.
We need to know what her rights are as far as the road is concerned.
Okay.
Because she, she, she objects to it, and it is going to have an effect on her, access to her property would be my guess.
She is, yes, she's, she's the closest resident, and she's within sight and sound of the guesthouse. That's correct. Next item is that of Princess Anne Hotel LLC. City council voted to declare the property as access back in March of 2019 and approve the rezoning for the property in April of 2019. Unfortunately, at that time, the proffer agreement that was attached to the rezoning request referenced the original exhibits rather than the revised site layout and landscaping plans. So there are revised proffers that will come before the council now, that will clarify what we believe the city council approved, and will show that any plan, subsequent plans for the first phase of construction will be in substantial conformance with those approved plans. So basically, we consider this to be a housekeeping-type item coming before you. Last item is that of Anita Boudick. Council was previously briefed, I believe, back on June 4th about this application. This is a conditional zoning application. The applicant is seeking an indefinite deferral to allow them to consider new options for the property. To date, we've not seen any revised plans, so we don't know exactly what they have planned, but they would like time to work through these options. So again, they are seeking an indefinite deferral. And that's all we have.
Thank you, Barbara.
One of the planning items, but related to the, the letter that we had about the kickoff survey for the comprehensive plan. I think the questions are fine, but I, I hope you'll pick another name. Virginia Beach Tomorrow has already been used. These are the Virginia Beach Tomorrow plans that are done.
Wow, a little yellow.
Yeah, 76 and 86, I think you need an, you need an original.
2.0.
Yeah. This is Dr. Rockman's work.
Dr. Leonard Rockman, yes. I'm very familiar with Mr. Rockman. We will revisit, we brainstormed over 40 names, trying to come up with something, and the closest one we felt that might have worked was that one, and it's why, because it was already used. So we will, we will revisit and try to come up with something.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Manager, we're ready for the next one. John?
Well, I'll try to be very appreciative of people's time. I didn't realize that how opportunist it would be that I would have provided a written, because I always prefer written over oral. I think you're much more efficient when you write than when you speak often. So I'm not going to try to repeat all of that, because I think you can all read that for yourselves, and I appreciate your comments. But the foundation of it is, is I've always said, and we set the retreat last winter, that we wanted to at least actively consider a bond referendum in 2020. I think the case is never more compelling, both in terms of the existential threat, but more importantly, the market in terms of the low cost of borrowing is certainly going to continue for a short period of time, the next two, three years. But it is a unusual, today the Treasury, the Tengger Treasury note was 1.67, that's an incredible number. The feds are looking to reduce the federal funds rate another 150 basis points over the next four or five months. That's pretty phenomenal in itself. The Swiss, though, they issued it to themselves, just issued 50 years of bonded debt at negative rates, which is phenomenal. Four central banks have negative fund rates. So it's a very favorable time to be borrowing money. And the other part that goes with that, we can move on a much more aggressive pace, or give the public the choice. This is all about asking the public if they want to buy down our risk at a faster pace than we have chosen to do. Because they're the ones that are accepting the risk, not us. We, we could be flooded too, but my point is, we're not. Clearly, I've done a lot of research looking at how much more value we could get on a much larger multi-project construction bid. Your mobilization, demobilization costs dramatically. I talked about paper, stable workforce, you get economy of scale on purchasing of commodities. I think we could get much greater value in a shorter period of time. I think we ought to look at also the options of the duration of finance. I don't know what the right answer is, but it may be more advantageous at these low rates to have a shorter duration of paying off the debt, because we tend to do level principal payments and then pay interest. But what if we did that in 10 versus 20 and could borrow twice the volume of money at the same rate and do more drainage improvement projects? And someone says, "Well, what is that risk?" Well, many of us have seen the risk identified for us if we should get that. We don't control catastrophic event. We've got $56 billion of taxable real estate, not counting the part that we own that's not taxable. Look at the incomes, and the economic impacts are pretty significant that can come from that. And I think we ought to start the homework. And that's the part at the retreat, we kind of said, "Well, there's many things, and I don't think it's all just borrowing." I do mention my paper, it's also about the policy changes we need to make. It just can't be, you know, all civil engineering answers. I think people are looking for an integrative approach, but what I've heard from folks, not from everyone, but a lot of people saying, "Why can't we move faster?" And I think in the current climate, I think we can move faster. I think we can make a compelling case why faster is more important. And I went to two of the workshops that were out there, and we're talking to people around there, also staff, and they said, "Yeah, you know, that, they'd like to see what the value proposition is." They didn't give me any, but they are very interested in having the choice. And if, one says, "What if they choose no?" I said, "Well, then the public has been a conscious partner in accepting the risk that we are taking today, and we will continue on the pace that we have." But why wouldn't we want to ask the public and to do that? And I just think it's something that we should actively make a choice. If, if there's not a consensus of people wanting to do that, then I think we should not, because I think to make it work with the community, they're going to be looking for us as the leaders of the community to say, "Why, this is a good idea." They're not going to be looking to the staff to tell them why it's a good idea. They're going to be looking to us to say why we think this is a commitment they should make. And if they say no, then they say no, and we move on, and no harm, no, no foul. It's not personal rejection, it's just it didn't fit their, either financial or their personal vision, or they'd rather take the risk than pay the cost of buying it down. But I do believe that we owe a responsibility to pose the choice and to build the foundation and a program that would be workable and that would be financially practical. And I think if we're doing something in investment to protect the things that generate the revenue that pays our bill, I'd be interested to see how receptive the bond market other places would be. But clearly, the capital is out there, and clearly, the construction capacity is out there. And I think we could, we could be on the forefront. I think it is doable, but it wouldn't be inexpensive. And I think it's always in 1986, we told the people, you know, schools, it was rec centers and all, I think we raised taxes like 8.6 cents in total after that referendum in 86, because the people saw the projects, they knew that's all we could spend it on. Here's the cost, here's the maintenance cost, and to this day, it's the way we do parks and rec. So I think it's, I'm certainly, as you could tell, excited about telling the story, because I think there's a compelling science story, and I think there's a compelling financial business case as to why now is better than later in light of the marketplace.
Okay, Jim, then Rosemary, then Barbara, and then Jess.
Thanks. And John, so when I read this, it looks like 400 million is what you're kind of.
That's a notional cost, it could be maybe a little less, maybe a little more. It's not the solution, it's a.
So then basically, let's say if we did 400 million, then you're talking about potentially real estate tax, because we talk about Gaston, and that was DFU fees.
True, and we end up never issuing the bonds because, but this would be a, just like in 86, when we did rec centers and schools.
Okay.
We did, it would have to put them out.
Maybe 8 cents, something like that, it's just, just quick back of the envelope, okay.
Maybe slightly less with interest rates, well, another 50 basis points, I think.
Yeah, so, so what I, and I, I think it's a good idea to take it to the public. I, I think, though, the only way we succeed on something like this is frankly, is identifying the projects and being extraordinarily specific about the projects, because I think if people see 400 million dollars to flooding, and honestly, I don't know that we want to put maintenance in this, because I don't think people can see maintenance. I, I think it would need to be something like that, that major project in the Rose Hall, yeah, Bow Creek, that's it, that, because that's, that's a huge project that people can see that, that provides immediate relief to frankly, the area that was hit the hardest during Matthew. So I, I think, that's just my opinion, but I, but I, I like the way you did this. I completely agree with you that we have to engage Wall Street on this, because I think we have to make sure that whatever we do doesn't impact our bond rating, or all this great stuff about our rate is going to, is going to be kind of be a.
Correct.
A big point. But I mean, in the same respect, if you read, and I know you've read the Bond Perspectives, and if you read some of the comments that, that the rating agencies say, they specifically talk about our, our response to recurrent flooding and sea level rise and things like that in a positive manner. So, so yeah, I think this is good to move forward with, and I, are you talking about just like doing an in-depth discussion at the retreat, or how did you want to go with this? If we're down to 2020, it's, it really is not as much time as everybody thinks.
That's why, you know, I wrote, and you could see, I said about specific projects and making sure it matches, how did you pick the project? So you got to use your modeling, you got to use your science, so that people see the objectivity of it. I think some homework needs to be done in parallel, because I think you can go and engage the bond market informally while we're doing homework. The staff's got to kind of tell us what the best science, where you get the biggest protection for, for the buck, versus every district gets, you know, 25 million, you don't get anything out of that. And then, but I think that's the part about paying, the strategy of paying it down faster is so that you can do double the projects and make that part of the bond referendum question, that the, the debt that's freed up as you retire it is not recycled in general, but is recycled specifically for additional drainage projects, because believe me, they're going to go on forever. So I think we can make a compelling case to the public, and the retreat could be a good place to do it at. It's, it's, I think that would give time, maybe, I've got enough time for the staff to kind of, I kind of laid out what I thought step processes were, but that's my, just little parochial view, it may not be expansive enough. But I think there, to do a timeline, how do you get ready? There's a date where you have to tell the courts when you want to put on the ballot, that's a deadline. And then you got to back up the education and all the homework you have to do. It's a lot of work, and that's why it has to be the council as a whole that says, "Yeah, this is work we want to do."
Rosemary, and then Barbara.
So was 86 the last time we had a successful one? When was, when was the last successful bond referendum?
Well, the bond referendum for Lake Gaston was after the 86 referendum.
Did we have a bond referendum for Lake Gaston?
Yes, we did. And Myra was a big proponent. We did have a referendum for it. We never issued a debt, because we raised so much cash, but there was a referendum for it.
We didn't sell the bonds.
We didn't sell the bonds.
No, but we had a referendum on it, is all I said.
So, anyway.
It's been a while.
It's been a really long time since we've had a successful one. We've had some unsuccessful ones. And so we need to learn from both of those, how we became successful and how we had a failure. And you're, I, I really think you're on to something, John, I really do. But if we're going to do it, we've got to be in it to win it.
I agree, but we also have to admit that if we don't win it, the people got a choice, and that's victory.
Anyway, let me, let me finish, please. I know you're excited. But we got to be in it to win it, and it's going to take a lot of planning, and it's, as much as having everything spelled out, it needs to be distributed fairly evenly over the city, so that everybody has something to gain from it. So, and that's what happens with, you know, with a lot of the schools and the rec centers and everything, they're spread around. And of course, the last time we had, I think it was 99, was the school and library one, and that one was not. So we need to look at why that one failed and learn, you know, learn from that. And I know light rail's a sticky subject, but there was a lot of money put into that refer, that referendum that failed, and why did that one fail? And I'm not saying it should or shouldn't have, but you learn from all of these things. And so you, you spread it out, you need a really good plan, and you need a really good plan to, we can call it educate the public, but it's also to be like a marketing thing that, so that they can understand why it's important. And I really think that the, there's a lot of the business community would come together to help promote and educate and get the message out, and just getting that message out. So 2020 is going to be a huge election presidential. The last, last year was 170,000 that voted Virginia Beach, it's probably going to be well over 200. So that's a lot of people to get the message out.
173,000.
To be exact. Well, I was round numbers, 170 is pretty good, considering I wasn't on the ballot. So it is, it's one of those roll-up-your-sleeves, you know, go to work, but you also want to make sure you don't want to have a whole lot of other things on the ballot either, so you can really focus on this. So I, I think the business community would become engaged, because it's going to be just important to them. I say to people, "We've got to do things or we're going to drown."
Every one, every one sees it.
A simple thing, so, but you've got to have a plan, and it's got to be a good plan. And when they pass before, it's not just staff. Council members have got to be engaged, and a lot of people have got to be engaged to go out through the community to say why it's important.
I do think the council members are the most critical communicators of a successful bond referendum.
Barbara?
Well, I, I think referendums are great, once we know exactly what it is we need, but I'm a little, we're not there yet to knowing what are the projects that should be on a referendum, because this process isn't complete yet. And I know we've got the stormwater projects, and we've got the sea level rise projects, and of course, the sea level rise study is not yet complete. And, and until it is, I don't know how we could pick specific ways to spend the money. And I know, you know, I went to two of the presentations last week and just came away very enthused at the work that's being done and has been done, and the data that's collected. And I was particularly like the, the nature-based coastal flood mitigation strategies, which I think are important to be among the first, because they are preventive, you know, more than just the gray infrastructure. So whether you're talking about sea level rise things or stormwater things, but I just know that two-thirds of the city is in the southern watershed, and precious little of that proposed money is in the southern watershed. And I think if we jump the gun on this, the southern watershed's going to come up with nothing. And I don't want to see that happen, because I don't think we're ready yet. As a matter of fact, at the budget hearings, remember, I asked if we could, could have a continued bit of study to look at the wind tide situation? And then I wanted to use focus groups. Well, we've done three of them, we've got three more to go. Well, we've done three of them, we've got three more to go tomorrow night and then next week. And so they're still even looking at this wind tide situation, whether there's anything that could or should or may be able to be done to work with that, that's still not known yet. So I just, I don't think we're ready to pin down what the project should be because we haven't finished the work. And I think, you know, you're right, it has to include everybody in the city. We can't put all the money in one spot. If you're going to get a referendum approved, you've got to spread it around. And speaking for a very large geographical area of the city, it's not ready.
Okay, John, and then Jess.
Well, I spoke before, I'll defer to Jess who has not spoken.
I think the bond referendum is the right move, particularly because I think realistically, the next time we'd have the opportunity to do that would be the next presidential cycle because we would need to gauge as many people as we possibly could. And I think while we may not be completely ready to go in terms of what projects we'd want to spend the money on, I don't see how we could possibly do a referendum after this next election cycle does in four years in the future. I think, I think it then becomes too late almost. I do agree that to make it successful, we need to show that everybody is going to benefit from it, even some of the areas that maybe don't feel, we don't realize have had an impact. So I think if we can find a way to present a referendum and, you know, really to piggyback what you're saying, what you're saying is, this is how it'll benefit, you know, Prince San, this is how it'll benefit Kempson, this is how it'll benefit Bayside. Obviously, you know, Rose Hall was heavily impacted, but there really is flooding all over the city and it's just, the individual people's ability to cope with that is different in each district. You know, some areas, people are able to burden more than other areas and I think the best way to, the best approach would be to be as well-rounded as possible. And I think we can generalize a little bit if time is the concern. I think we can say, okay, we are planning on, you know, doing this in this area, some of this money could go there. I don't think we have to worry so much about spending it before the referendum. I think it's saying, we need to move as quickly as we possibly can and if you, as the public, are ready and willing, we can make it happen. And that's the feedback I get is, one, they want to be asked. I've never heard a resident not be willing to give their opinion, so I don't think there's any risk in asking for it. And two, I think if we, if we're proactive, it'll see that, the public will see that this is a council that's ready to act and ready to move.
Okay, and John, if you don't mind, Jim has a comment, then you can close out.
Yeah, so I just wanted to go back to-
Then they got to pay for it.
I understand what you're saying, Jessica, about that, but I really think the projects need to be identified because there isn't flooding all over the city. And that's the issue that we have, and I think I've shared this story before, right before the budget, January, February, March, for whatever reason, I had a slew of civic leagues that I was going to. And everyone, I said, okay, this is the plan, this is what we're going to plan to do for flooding. And so how many people here were impacted by Matthew and no hands go up. Now, there are a couple that were in certain specific areas, but a lot of areas in my district were not ever impacted by flooding other than nuisance flooding on the road. So, not saying it's not a crisis because it isn't and it impacts thousands and thousands of our citizens, but if we want to get the people who aren't impacted by it, they need to see what we're going to do for it. And they need to see that even though this project may be at Bow Creek, it's going to keep the water off the road that they traverse all the time. Because, you know, for a lot of folks, it has not impacted their homes, hasn't flooded their driveways, hasn't flooded their garages and we still need them to vote and we need their support because again, it's a major project and it's a lot of money that we need to get as much buy-in as possible. I completely agree with you, we cannot wait four years because this is the time to do it. But I just, I can't say strongly enough that we've got to have projects identified because I think without that, it's just too nebulous for somebody to do it and they're saying, well, we're just going to give them the money and they're going to spend it on something else. And that's what people are going to say. It's not accurate, but that's what people are going to say. So that's kind of where I am on that.
Yeah, John.
Well, I appreciate the warm response, but I think all of us go out there and can see it. It is about protecting our most affordable housing and I think, I always think that people think beyond their own personal self-interest. Maybe I'm a little bit, you know, optimistic in that regard, but I do think it's true. It's a community thing, it's about protecting the homes that truly are among our most affordable places and plenty of people who are financially vulnerable by the flood insurances. So it has something to do with the long-term health of our tax base. I think there's just a lot of dimensions, that it's a community investment, it's not about this neighborhood. And it is, this is a down payment on many, many hundreds of millions, probably billions of dollars even coming from other people as well. This is a multi-generational investment and it's just like, look how much we benefit from Lake Gaston today and in today's dollars, that $200 million bond referendum would be about 4.50. So the amount of numbers is big, but when you adjust for inflation, it's not as big as you think. But look at how much better off we are relative to that. And I think we'll be judged more by, my e-scooters are important, we'll be judged more by the capital investments we make to provide for the future people in the city than we will by some of the day-to-day execution things. And I think that's the positive message because if we took a hit like North Carolina took, there are decades of recovery. You know, decades of recovery. So that's, I think this is, we might not be successful, but I'm very positive. I've been out talking to people and I think that we have to have the projects. I agree on that. I do think the model will help us do that. I don't disagree with you. We've got to find a bridge that both allows us to spread, but at the same time, not spread so much that you don't get any real drainage improvement, you just shift where the flooding happens. And that's, the model's going to be important to explain to people like that. Matter of fact, I suggested to the staff that we have all these hard copy stuff at these workshops. I keep saying it over and over again, today, people are visual learners. We need to be able to show people in real time, this neighborhood or a neighborhood, show what it's like when it rains with the current system, where the rain builds up and actually shows, you know, visual where the water comes up and then say, this is the storm that we're building for, this. And if we didn't, this is how your house is going to be underwater and this is what you get. But that is going to have to be some technology to visualize that because the cardboard doesn't carry the message. But visualization, people understand it. But I appreciate the warm response and I look forward at the retreat.
Louis.
Well, I completely support your idea, John. Let me say that to start with. I think it's great.
Doesn't she have this special line out?
And so I think, the only question I have, quite frankly, is one to the manager. And that is, in terms of when we could put the referendum on, what is the timeframe that would be required for you to identify how this money would be spent?
We propose to you a 15-year program, it's $1.3 billion. Currently, we have a funding program that's somewhere in the 250 million. You had 4 million, 400 million, you're halfway there. You have a long way to go. The projects that we're focused on are the internal flood control projects. We haven't even broached the sea level rise projects and quite frankly, we'll need this money just to do our internal flooding issues to withstand the flooding events in the low lying areas and the neighborhoods that are currently impacted by our current. We are going to, we are going to have to have more monies than this. This is a way forward, but we're going to need federal support for a lion's share of the major projects associated with sea level rise and the impacts that the Albemarle and the Curatec are putting in there. There's certainly projects that we can provide to those areas that are, have recurrent flooding and that's the focus of Phase One. So I don't have a problem providing that list and bringing that up and establishing a workshop purely dedicated to reviewing that which we are currently designing. And we will be completing all our modeling so we know we're going to be very accurate in the project results that we're going to obtain if and when we're ever able to afford the construction.
Great. And, you know, let me just say that I think we can all agree in concept that we're going to move forward with this. And I think we all can agree in concept that we should identify the projects ahead of time and we can do that via discussion. And let me just put, you know, a little emphasis on this. I am in constant contact with the military who emphasize that they really have to see action by us, you know, to avoid any type of future BRAC or any type of thing because flooding and mobility is a major focal point of the military going forward. And the other thing is, think about this, economic development. You know, it's easier to go out and try to get companies down here when they know that we're addressing these problems because we not only want people to work here, we want people to live here. So I think, John, thank you very much and I thank everybody for a great discussion.
Jim? So I was going to bring this up under council comments, but you just mentioned it, so I will. Last Wednesday, Thursday, I put in for the mayor at a dinner with the undersecretary of the Navy for facilities, environment, and it's a very long title. But a couple of key takeaways there is that unlike other parts of the country, and they're having this issue all around the country, we continue to embrace the military and they're certainly appreciative of it. A number of people here are familiar with the P4 program that Oceana is undertaking to relocate fence lines and to try to, to gain some funding that they can use specifically on the base. But the other thing, and going back to what the mayor said, there is in fact, money now set aside, specific money in the Defense Department, I just set aside for flooding control projects on, off base. It's a very small pot of money and it is competitive, but shovel-ready projects that have local match ability are ones that would be a little bit more competitive, I guess. So I think that's kind of interesting, that's kind of the same thing we did with Wesner Bridge, obviously not military, but shovel-ready project that had a local match. They got us to be able where we were with the feds and the state government. So I think that's something, as we go forward on this referendum, kind of keep that in the back of our mind, that if any of these could be utilized for, to assist the bases and their primary issue that they're considering is in front of Dam Neck and also in front of the Little Creek portion of JEB Little Creek Ford Story. And those areas is where their main concerns are, that maybe we could take a look at that. But I just kind of want to throw that in because you mentioned that. So there is at least that small pot of money that we could take a look at. I agree with you, I think at some point, the federal government's going to realize all their coastal communities are having issues like that and they're going to have to figure out what they do, but that's down the road, so.
Great. Rosemary, Jess.
Well, I should say this for council comments as well, but John mentioned affordable housing and Sabrina and I saw a wonderful presentation of how if we don't have affordable housing, we're not going to have economic development. And Steve Lawson did it at the Housing Advisory Commission and it was really a great tie-in of why we've got to have one to get the other. And I'd really love it if we could get Steve to see if he would, because he's, you know, a private person, but he's brilliant when it comes to affordable housing. If we could get him and come and speak to our council.
We are, Ms. Wilson, we're going to tee it up the week before you go into your mid-year retreat because we think that part of your retreat is a short revisit, how'd you accomplish your big five, but we think there's a big six and we think that's where you're going and that's where we think you ought to go. And Aaron, I think would, if he gets back here, he'd agree to that. So we're going to tee him up to come in for you before you go to your mid-year.
And if he's involved with the national, on the national level, he's really, really great.
Good. If it's okay, if we can move forward because we got to get into executive, if we can go to council liaisons, please. John.
This Friday, I know I'll see you there, Sabrina is the, I'll call it Vision 2030 versus the other term, but they're meeting on this Friday at 9:00 AM if I remember correctly. So that, we'll be doing that. And so we'll be, I think I'd like to come back with a resolution, just renaming it because I think that's appropriate and maybe we can use the retreat to figure out what it is we want to achieve. I'll come back, work with Sabrina, some kind of paper. I always think it's nice to put paper in front of people to look at to get feedback, but what is it we want 2030 to do? And I think they're looking for us to give them some parameters. I think that's fair.
Okay, that's good. John, thank you.
Well, no, I was just going to say they are and at our last special session, we talked about some of those areas and they do want you to come as well, Mayor, to kind of address it too, so they are kind of-
Okay.
Public meeting notice.
Can't have three.
Well, let me be clear.
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes people take things and make something more than it is, but let me be clear, they're asking you to come at some point in time-
I would be glad to.
Meeting, not the one on Friday.
Okay.
So there won't be more than three.
Okay. You tell them, I'll be glad to do it.
All right.
More than two.
Well, yeah, they won't.
Okay. Anybody else?
Are we in council comment now?
Yeah, we're more in, oh, no, liaisons, finished liaison? Comments?
I have a comment.
Okay.
So as you know, we had that resident who came to speak with us about her pet pig. I and Aaron worked with the legal department to craft a draft resolution, which I emailed you all. Aaron and I thought it would be a positive thing to hold a town hall so that we could kind of gauge the public's interest. We had a lot of passionate responses in both directions. I've spoken with animal control a number of times since that meeting. I've spoken with a number of stakeholders, both for and against. I've spoken with a number of stakeholders that now feel they have, they would like to hear other, additional animals to be considered as well. I, at this point, Aaron's not in here right now, but the short discussion he and I had, I think I'll speak for him in this. I don't feel the ordinance is ready, so.
Fine by us.
Yes, thank you.
I am not planning on moving on that today or in the immediate future, but I did want to let you know that I'm going to continue to pursue it to see where we can find the most common ground. But I did just want to give you all an update that while we did have passionate responses, it isn't, I don't, I would not say it's significantly one way or the other. After the kind of the dust settled, it seems that there's a lot of mixed response, but I think it needs further vetting.
That's great.
Unless somebody else has another thought on that.
Thanks for the efforts.
Okay, Barbara?
Well, there's been a lot of mention of this upcoming retreat. What's going to be the format? Are we going to get to present our issues like we used to or is it going to be a philosophical thing like the thing we had before?
I think we'll have an agenda that'll be pre-approved by the council members.
So we'll be able to put forward what we want to talk about the way we used to?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
You know, Ms. Emily, the last, the other retreat we had, we had a whole group of new council folks in there and, you know, yes, it was kind of a how do you do, but, you know, once again, this, we will constantly strive to improve the process and we will have better input and it'll be, it'll be taken care of. You got my word on that. Okay, Guy?
Mr. Mayor, the resort area strategic action plan process continues and the next public hearing will be on August 22nd, I believe, at the Convention Center. I'm sure I got the date right. I think I've got the place right. And I am hoping to have a town hall on September 18th at the Law Enforcement Training Academy that'll be open to discussions from the public about e-scooters, among other things. I hope we get some good data out of that. And Councilman Rouse and I, and I don't want to step on your, Aaron, if you want to comment about it, but we visited Oceana earlier this week with Congresswoman Luria and I was fascinated to learn how much property Oceana owns outside the fence that is not necessarily vital to its mission and even some property inside the fence that of course, has to be regulated but might be available for commercial use as well, at least the right kind of commercial use.
That was a P4 thing, I said.
A Boeing or a Raytheon. I think it would, I think the council would be very interested in having a presentation from the commanding officer and the executive officer and I suggest that we invite them to make a presentation about that. I think they made some presentations to others earlier, maybe staff, maybe some of you have heard them, but it was new to me. And if you haven't gotten, including the kind of pictures, the visual of it, there's some very interesting possibilities. Oceana, to make it oversimplified, but Oceana is way behind in its maintenance and does, and because of the aggressive acquisition, asset acquisition program in the Defense Department, its maintenance situation is not likely to improve in the near future. But because of some of the quirks of the federal system apparently, if they are able to lease, for example, some of the property around them that they- to lease, for example, some of the property around them that they own, they can convert some of that, those funds into mitigating that backlog that they have in maintenance, which is quite serious. Thank you.
Can do. Okay.
So, Mr. Tower and Mr. Rouse, so this, they, they brought this up at MEAC and then also at a regional MEAC meeting as well. This is their P-4 plan that they want to do, talking about moving the fence line, doing some other things there. You know, I, I think it'd be a great thing for, for them to be able to do because you're right, they're at about a, about 5% of what they need in terms of maintenance. That's the number they're going to, they're going to use. The incoming CO, Hewitt, is actually kind of the, the push behind all this and, and he comes, he takes over back in September, so it might be a good idea, Dave, after, after he takes over to, to bring him in to, to, to give the same brief that he's giving to MEAC and, and the Norfolk Virginia Beach MEAC group as well. Maybe he can do that.
That'd be great. Good. Anybody else?
I just have two items.
Yes.
I have a couple, but I'll put those in a letter. One, I've asked the city attorney to prepare an item for our legislative package to amend our charter, to apply in future elections the same conditions that apply to mayor so that people can't run for office and at the same time not, if they don't win, can still stay on council. I think that, so I'm going to put, that's the thing I'm going to put in for future elections, not the one coming up, but I think it's something we did back in 1986. I thought it was constructive and I think all positions should be the same. Secondly, I've asked the city attorney to get, with the Commonwealth attorney, to identify what were the exact deficiencies in our ordinances that made it, that included in being able to prosecute people who move out of their district and don't properly notify when they know they have moved. So, I think we shouldn't let that in the future. People who do that should be prosecuted and ambiguities in our ordinances shouldn't allow people to circumvent the law and then not pay the consequences. We would do it for any other kind of misdeed and that certainly qualifies. So, those are two things I'm moving forward on, but I would like to know in the future, we had a brief about recycling and the issues that our contractor that we had was having. The recycling market hasn't changed, so I'm interested in getting updated as to what that looks like and what the influences are relative to the future budget in light of the recycling market.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Sabrina?
Is there some time to talk about?
Yes.
Okay. So, I wanted to spend some time talking about the advertisement of the meeting that took place July 10th for one that I hosted or requested with the staff. Later on during our time when we were off at break, I came upon an article that said that that meeting was an illegal meeting and I was very baffled by it and concerned because the public reached out and said basically, what's going on? You know, how did this come about? And so, I wanted to clarify, have a point of clarification as to what happened. It was, it was no, in no intent planned to be any type of illegal meeting. So, I want to make sure that the public knows that. That's not what we're here to do. And so, I wanted to give time for staff, I see Mark, you're raising your hand, to kind of talk about what happened to where, as far as the notification that was given, because we discussed it prior to the meeting taking place, that notification would go out and that we would cover our bases if more than three council members attended. So, I, Mark, if you'd like to talk about it.
That'd be great. Mark, thank you. We welcome the opportunity.
First of all, let me say that I deeply regret that the council members who were attended were, were characterized as having engaged in illegal activity. I, I, I truly regret that. All that the council members that attended were doing were showing up to listen to the concerns of their workforce. And there were no deliberations, there were no votes, there were no discussions. The council members were just there to listen and to have it characterized the way it was in one media outlet was exceedingly unfortunate. I could, I could talk about the concerns that I have with, with having meetings that may or may not be meetings and you don't know until they occur, but that would sound like an excuse and I'm not here to make an excuse. The city manager contacted me and said, it looks like there'll be more than three members of the council at this meeting. What do we need to do? I said I would take care of it. We posted the meeting outside, the board out here. I did not make the additional phone call that I needed to make to make sure that that got posted on the website. And that was on me and that is a mistake that I made. I very much regret that that article was written and that the council has been criticized for a mistake that I made and I can promise you, it won't happen again. There are other elements of the opening, you know, again, I, I don't want to get into this discussion and have it sound like I'm making excuses because I'm not. I've just taken responsibility for it and I'm appropriately so. But, I will say, you also have the issue with minutes where you have to keep minutes if it's a meeting, but you don't necessarily have enough people there to constitute a quorum to vote on the minutes. So, there are other concerns additional to that issue of the notice that, that makes it difficult for, you know, pseudo-meetings to occur. So, in the past, for the last 40 years, the council's been, been pretty assiduous about making sure that no more than two people are in any one spot when city business is discussed. I congratulate the council for wanting to be collaborative. I don't want to stand in the way of that collaboration. Again, I apologize for what happened at this meeting. We will need to work out a formal procedure if we're, if that type of thing is going to happen on a frequent basis. There is a disconnect in state law between when a meeting is called, for example, to call a special meeting in this council, there are specific requirements, but yet you can unintentionally have a special meeting that was never called under the FOIA Act. So, again, it's on me. I, I very much apologize to you. I'm the one who didn't pick up the phone and make the call that needed to be made to get it done and, and I will take the responsibility to make sure that if we understand this is happening again, it will get done appropriately.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Definitely understand, just wanted to make sure the public understood that there was no intentional.
There, every council member there had every reason to believe that they could lawfully be there. It was, certainly no council member did anything wrong. The error, it was, to use a baseball analogy, it was a pop fly that everybody else thought somebody had and I'm the ultimate one who could prevented it and I didn't get it done. So, I apologize for that.
I appreciate that. Amanda, okay.
So, I, I have to say, I feel like the buck stops here with me because I post some city council agendas and meetings and while I appreciate Mark saying that and I echo everything he just said and stated, I'm the one that posts council agendas. However, it wasn't an agenda, there was no agenda. It wasn't a special meeting and so, in all honesty, it never crossed my mind to post it because there was no special session called. And those are the only things our office has posted in the past. So, lessons learned, we'll fix it going forward, just need some direction from council if they want me just to post it on BB.gov or how, how they want me to do it from this point forward.
Sabrina?
Well, that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Well, it's, it's a puzzle because it seems like we have just made a very broad statement about when more than two members of council cannot be together, if it's at some kind of something, which is this was a function, it wasn't a meeting, where city affairs are discussed. I mean, that would be any luncheon that is called, we go to many, that, you know, we're invited to, that the topic of discussion is city affairs or any number of things. If we, any of us go to any of these things that we're constantly invited to attend, well, you know, if, I don't know whether two more council members are going to be there or not, so, and oftentimes it's kind of like that particular thing, I didn't decide until the last minute that, yes, I can make this. So, if it's, if it's as broad as any gathering where there are more than two people on the council present and city affairs are discussed, that's too broad. I don't think, I don't know how we live with it because we're all, I mean, we get invited to things all the time.
I agree with you that the, that the FOIA language is very broad. We don't write it, we have to live with it. It, it specifically says whether city businesses transacts or regardless of whether any votes that are taken. I think if you're out at a, at a, at a community meeting that, that was not called by someone associated with the city and you see two other council members, I think that's probably okay. But, in this case, this was probably arguably a technical violation because it was, it was called by a, a, a member of the city, it was called by a city representative and more than three people were there. And so, I should have ensured, I appreciate Amanda trying to take up for me, but I should have called Amanda and said, you have to do this and I didn't. And so, I, I, it, it stops with me. I, I, I'm the one.
Just to clarify though, but I mean, like these committee meet, all these committees and commissions that we have in the city, okay, we generally have two liaisons, so the, the third person had better not ever show up in any of these meetings because if the two liaisons are there, that makes three and it's city business.
If the third person shows up, there ought to be a discussion, someone should leave before the meeting starts.
We should never, never attend a committee that we don't happen to be the liaison for. It's kind of the way it is.
That's kind of the way it is.
Jim?
So, my, my question, and this kind of goes back to something I asked you a while ago and you, when all this first started and you said something you'd have to research, but last year there were eight sitting council members who were going to candidate forums.
There's a carve-out in the, in the, in the section for forums, for candidate forums.
So, we're, we're okay there?
Yes.
And then the other thing, you talk about being called by one person. Now, technically, the only single person on council can call a meeting is the mayor.
The mayor. And pursuant to the charter, if council members want to call it, it takes three pursuant to the charter.
So, this wasn't, this wasn't.
And the manager can also call a special meeting.
So, this was not a called meeting?
That's right and that's part of the disconnect. Again, the more I talk about that, the more it sounds like I'm making an excuse. I want to be clear, I'm not making an excuse, but there is a disconnect there.
But, I think this is a good conversation in, in terms of clarification. You know, we live under the public eye, we live under scrutiny and everything. We just want to make sure that we're clean and doing the right thing for the right reason. And so, trust me when I say I appreciate, you know, the tenor of this conversation and even the previous conversation on the bond referendum. You know, this is being deliberative and we're communicating with each other as a body and I think that's what we should do. Yes?
One other thing, and I have, and I sent out an email about a resolution in memory of Mr. E. George Menz, who passed on July 26th. And I talked about it with a few people before on council, I talked with you, Aaron, as well. And so, I sent out a copy, I have a copy here for you to take a look at if, you know, there's something you want to add to it or.
Yeah, if you could pass one.
Sponsor as well, but I know that when attending his funeral, there were, you know, several people who came out and talked about the impact on the C-TAC community and so, just didn't want to miss an opportunity to memorialize all of his efforts within our city.
Thank you, Sabrina. Appreciate it.
And I think this is great and we also, you know, perhaps another form of formal recognition, you know, you know, just, yeah, maybe I identify her out for there because he was an impact player, you know, out there. And so, you know, this is a discussion that we can have to recognize, you know, his participation to the community.
Will this be something we'll be able to do with other people because we, this is beginning, because a lot of folks, former mayors and so forth, passed away and we've never done this before.
Yeah, but, you know, something, we, we, that's why we'll talk about it. We will talk about it.
We sort of need to know what the threshold is to allow this as a standard proceeding.
Okay. All right. Okay. Yeah, we can, we can make that a retreat item, you know, that we can deliberate and talk about for a, some form of recognition that will be appropriate. We will make that there. All righty. Okay, now we can, if we're ready for the consent agenda.
Okay, under ordinances and resolutions, we have speaker on item J-1, 3, 4, 5, 7C. I'll start over so I can mark it. J-1, J-3, J-4, J-5, 7C, 7D, 8A, 8B, and 9C. Yes, I can, Mr. Jones. Once again, J-1, J-3, 4, 5, 7C, and D, 8A and B, and 9C. Other than these items, does anybody have concerns about any of these things?
Did you already say J-3?
I did.
Okay. Okay. She wants to be on H-1 and H-2, not J-1.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Those are public hearings, yeah. J-1 is somebody else. Okay. All right, so we've got that.
And I will just, just, you know, I will be abstaining on item J-1.
We're hearing it, we're hearing it, so.
I know, I just want to let you know that I.
Okay.
Figured you would be, yeah. Okay. So, under planning, K-1, Mishroom Gold VABLP, conditional use permit regarding indoor recreational facility, 2720 North Mall Drive, Rose Hall, Mr. Berluci.
No issue.
Two, Josephine P. Parker, conditional use permit, Ray Automobile Repair Garage, a modification of conditions, Ray Bulk Storage Yard, 573 Central Drive, District 6, Mr. Tower.
No issue.
Item three, Rolle, Rolwellma M. and Gregory McGraw, conditional use permit regarding family daycare, 5504 Hayden Road, District 4, Bayside.
Fine.
The other two, we have speakers on, that's the Rose Hall Skate House and MMR Associates.
Okay, is that it?
So, and next year, let's not have a formal meeting on National Light Out.
We've been four weeks in a row without.
Well, we can have a afternoon meeting.
Yeah. We'll make, we'll make it a workshop.
Workshop and then the following week, just switch.
Okay. All right. Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 3, Kempsville. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 7, City of Virginia Beach versus Witch Duck One and Associates LLC and City of Virginia Beach versus West Coast Properties Group LLC. And then personnel matters, consideration, discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resigning of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A 1, council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees, and performance of council appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, you can have the roll, please.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Emily?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Rouse?
Aye.
Mr. Berluci?
Aye.
Mr. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Luton?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?